Hafaday, welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Monday, November 20th, 2023. It's about 2:10 PM. In compliance of the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Monday, November 13th and Friday, November 17th, 2023. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone is testifying, we ask that you please refrain from moving around within the public hearing room. And we've asked as well that protocol help us to keep the doors quiet. Individuals who present oral testimony who wish to submit written testimony afterwards are welcome to do so to ensure that their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or by invitation of a senator who has the floor or when recognized by the committee chair. Senators, there's several panels signed up to testify, so I'm going to ask that we limit our questions to five minutes of each panel. If we need more, we'll come back again if time permits. The hearing is to collect testimony, not to debate or engage in back-and-forth arguments with the participants. Berating of any of the witnesses will not be allowed. If you ask a question, please allow them to answer. Those who are testifying, please, if you are asked a question, just answer the question. No need to go on and on. Just answer the question directly as possible. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here with me today. Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Jesse Lee Luhon, Senator Chris Duñez, and Senator Tom Fisher. Thank you, colleagues, for being here. This is in regards to Bill Number 185-37 LS. Oh, I'm so sorry. Senator Telo Titigui, thank you as always for being here with me. All right. So Bill 185, I will ask the sponsor, this was introduced on October 13th, 2023, referred to the committee on October 16th. And I will allow the sponsor to introduce it. Include, if you can, please read the title of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The bill is Bill Number 185-37 LS. The sponsor is Yours Truly, Senator Chris Barnett. It's an act to add a new subsection 83-117, Chapter 83, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring any new hospital constructed pursuant to the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center Act of 2021 to be constructed in the village of Tamooning. Madam Chair, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to open on the bill, and I'd also like to greet everyone who's come out to provide testimony here on this bill. Bill 185-37 is a very simple bill. It's not complicated or complex. It simply requires us to build a new hospital in Tamooning. The decision to introduce this bill did not come from some random or irrelevant place. Sutpun Point, also commonly known as Epa Point or even Oka Point, is now the highest-rated location for a new hospital according to the Matrix Study. We spent almost $2 million of our people's money on the Matrix Study, and to continue to ignore it in favor of personal preferences of Ataloup and its cabinet is foolish. Why did Matrix rank Sutpun Point so highly? They use data and numbers, not feelings and emotions. The data and numbers in the study show, a matrix called at Epa Point, this location is accessible to the highest number of our population when compared to other sites. Entry to this site is also accessible for multiple points. When we met with the governor, she told us Attica would lack the necessary infrastructure to build on and that she would commit $100 million in ARP funds to install the infrastructure required to build a medical complex at Edagaga. The Matrix Study shows infrastructure upgrades at Tamooning are only $26 million. $26 million to upgrade existing utilities at Tamooning, while power, water, and sewer will cost upwards of $100 million in ARP funds at Edagaga. Some Southerners have expressed support for the Edagaga site, and it is true. Building at Edagaga will benefit some southern villages like Jotnia, Talafolfo, and Inilahan. But building at Tamooning may be better for Malasso, Humatec, Hoggett, and Santorita. Now, whether we build at Edagaga or Tamooning, the simple fact remains, southern villages will always be more than 30 minutes away from the new hospital. I completely understand the concerns of my fellow Southerners, as I have lived down south all of my life. The governor's messaging about a medical complex being built on the back road to Anderson for the people in the south resonates with Southerners who have felt neglected by this administration and others before it. That's why I want to push for improvements to existing facilities in the south and push for the building of new facilities that are actually located in the south for the people in the south. I think we can do that with the savings we gain by building at Epa. Many of us knew about existing federal Veterans Affairs plans to expand its clinic operations on island. I met with Dr. Kevin McDermott months ago, and he shared VA plans to expand with a northern clinic. These plans have since come to fruition, thankfully, with the news a northern SEBAC will open soon adjacent to GRMC in a rented space. Although the governor has met with veterans, it appears she wasn't aware of this information or chose not to share it. And it was knowing this information that prompted us to question exactly what plans the governor had for a veterans facility or wing at her proposed Edagaga Medical Complex site. A proposed veterans wing at Epa Point would make sense. The proposed Edagaga site will be adjacent to a missile defense location and a proposed live-fire and explosive training facility at Anderson South. Across the street from Edagaga will be the Hawaiian Rock Facility, where we routinely hear the blasting that occurs at the Hawaiian Rock Quarry. A veterans wing at Epa makes sense because of its proximity to the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Facility, the serenity of the view, and the closeness to the new VA clinic located adjacent to GRMC. I want to state for the record, some veterans have said publicly and on social media, or in some cases on both, that senators who do not support the governor's efforts to build a medical complex at Edagaga do not support our island's veterans. First, let me say this is simply not true. To say such a thing implies that all veterans support a billion-dollar medical complex at Edagaga, and let me just say for the record that all veterans do not. Secondly, to expect elected leaders to blindly support a billion-dollar project without having all of the findings, facts, and financials before us may well be an insult to the very democracy many veterans fought to protect. Thirdly, although I have never worn the uniform myself as the grandson of a Guam Combat Patrol veteran and Marine, the son of a Vietnam War veteran and a cousin and nephew to countless other combat veterans, I take offense to the idea that I don't support the veterans, especially since it's not true. I also want to address here the idea of expansion, since it has been one of the, if not the, main talking point against selecting Tamooning as the site of a new hospital. I think in order to successfully discuss or debate the idea of expansion, we must first look at the feasibility of the medical complex proposal itself. I believe the existing state of the Guam Memorial Hospital or the state of our public schools provide a good example of our government's track record of managing and maintaining facilities. Just today, the governor's office put out a press release saying, quote, "Epa Point is not large enough to co-locate a new public health facility, behavioral health facility, and wellness center, or a new veterans clinic." I don't think Epa Point has to be big enough to co-locate a public health facility, because public health, as already stated on the legislative record, the CDC lab will be located next to UOG. I also don't think Epa Point has to be large enough to co-locate a Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Facility, because we know Gibwick has publicly stated plans to expand on its existing footprint in Tamooning. I don't think Epa Point has to be large enough to co-locate a veterans clinic, because we now know the federal government is opening a new SEBAC clinic, not at Attica, but adjacent to GRMC. There are limitations to building at Edagaga because of the adjacent military radar sites and missile defense sites being built at Eagles Field. This means we can't build up, only out. That's why 102 acres is needed at Edagaga. But the people of Guam must ask themselves, do we really need 102 acres if we are seeing the proposed medical complex partners publicly state plans to occupy other areas outside of Edagaga? In our meeting with the governor, she agreed that our population, or lack of it, drives the availability of specialists on island. But testimony here in this public hearing room from an individual who attended one of Ataloup's public meetings on the complex proposal said the governor told the crowd, quote, "If we build the complex, no one will ever have to go off island for medical care again." But in our meeting with the governor, the governor said, "If we couldn't get the specialists to come to Guam, there's always telemedicine. But why would we need to build specialty clinics for doctors who will be zooming in?" It's not about getting the support of our people by telling them everything they want to hear. We have to be honest about the future we want, and we have to be honest about the future we can afford. We have a very difficult decision before us, and we don't have much time to make it. Our people deserve leadership that makes sound choices based on facts, and I believe right now the facts favor Tamooning. Si dos masi.
Si dos masi, Senator Barnett. I just want to clarify that this hearing today is on Bill 185, which, as the senator pointed out, is a bill requiring that the new hospital be constructed in the village of Tamooning. As you know, in 2019, the legislature passed a law authorizing the financing and construction of a hospital on government of Guam land. The governor's team decided none of the government of Guam land was acceptable and pursued federal land at Eagles Field. The AG did not approve that lease. We tried to have a public hearing on that Eagles Field lease, but only the AG attended. The governor's representatives did not. The administration is now pursuing Bill 184, not this bill, but another bill, which would use lands from the Guam Ancestral Land Bank that were reserved to compensate those landowners whose property was returned by the United States but would not be returned to landowners because it was kept for government of Guam uses, including the Tezen Airport lands and the Baragada lands used for National Guard facilities. And Bill 184 would allow the ancestral lands director to negotiate with the governor for the sale of the ancestral lands land bank property. The prior to, we've had four hearings on Bill 184, which are, we described those as Attica lands. We've concluded from all those public hearings, those will now be described as Attica lands. That's Bill 184. That's the governor's bill. That's the lands on the back road to Anderson. Prior to the introduction of Bill 185, which is Senator Barnett's bill that we're hearing today, we also had two hearings, oversight hearings, as to the assessment of sites for the location of a hospital, particularly Epa Point, also referred to as Sutpun Point or Oka Point in those hearings. So those were two oversight hearings, one in May and one in October 2023. So some of those materials has also been provided again to the senators. And we refer a lot to Epa, because Epa, as Senator Barnett pointed out, there were three top sites pointed out in the Matrix Study to build a complex on. The first was Eagles Field according to Matrix. The second was Epa Point or Oka Point, and the third is the Attica Crown lands. So I think there may be some reference today to Epa Point in particular, while the bill says the village of Tamooning in general. And so I just want to make sure that we're clear that what's going on and how we might get confused. Of the three properties that were analyzed by Matrix, Matrix said they use a ranking system based on the government of Guam's criteria, government of Guam's data, and that Epa was preferable over Attica Crown under the categories of travel distance, proximity to arterial roads, distance from clinics and hospitals, power, water, wastewater, construction costs, and land use and zoning compatibility. Attica Crown was preferable under the categories of size. It's approximately 100 acres that we're looking at there. Property value impact to the surrounding areas, because we're also proposing $100 million in infrastructure upgrades to that area would be necessary. Traffic conditions and future expansion capability. The medical, we did hear in previous oversights regarding Epa Point in particular as to some reasons why we should not build it at Epa Point. There were many. They included 30 billion fire ants, salt spray, and trash. In the October oversight hearing, we heard from the Guam Army, I mean, the Army Corps of Engineers, which said they found no fire ants when they cleared up the property. The property has been cleared up most, for the most part, except for 1,200 cubic yards, which was ineligible for them to clear up, and that has been left for Guam EPA. Guam EPA advised that they were going to clear that up when DPW's trucks became available, and they estimated between November 16 and December 1st. Department of Agriculture also testified at that hearing that they were not aware of any proposed developments that were stopped due to fire ants. All of those hearings, all of our hearings are available on YouTube for you to watch. Some of them are multiple parts, so you just have to be careful and find all the parts. We can help you if you need help with that. So I'm sure today we're going to talk a lot about the locations, the cost differences, the size differences, the infrastructure that's necessary. And so we'll proceed. I want to put up a map, if we could put up map number one. This is a map from our May oversight hearing regarding Epa Point. This is map number one. This is from the Department of Land Management. So the yellow area is land reserved. The yellow shaded area is land reserved for the Nafta Ni Mananata. It's a memorial that we are going to build, and we are going to re-enter our ancestors'. Human remains that have been found in different places on Guam are slated to be put there in a memorial that's already been designed and by law reserved. The bottom of the map, not shaded at all, you'll see like a set of five houses also within the yellow line. That's where the current Sagan Katuran Chamorro is located. That will not be impacted at Epa Point. So the shaded pink is the area that was available, and the white lettering, you can go to the next map. It says Lot 5173-1, area equals 27 plus or minus acres usable area. And in parentheses, is a proposed 40-foot right-of-way, which takes two plus or minus acres. That's the red slotted line. Those are the proposed two acres of right-of-way. So that left to 27 acres. All right. Thank you. You can remove the slides. We'll now hear testimony. First was Ken Leon Guerrero, Victor Duñez. We do have people on Zoom as well, and we are going to take them after those who are here live. And if the agencies don't mind, I'm going to take them after all the other testimony. Ken Leon Guerrero, Victor Duñez, Benny Roslin, Benny Siniklis, Kenz Charageloff, Dr. Shea, Thomas Shea, Hoa Nguyen, Dr. Nguyen.
Madam Speaker, can I give my spot before to Dr. Lim? Because his anesthesia, he's on call. So if he can testify, and then I come back up behind him.
Ray Lim?
Dr. Bray Lim.
Okay, you're going to switch slots? Okay, Dr. Shea, you're going to wait until his time? All right. Okay, so we'll begin. Mr. Leon Guerrero, please state your name for the record.
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero. I'm a community advocate and resident of Santa Rita, and I've been testifying in support of Guam Memorial Hospital on various issues since 2010. And today I'm testifying in support of Bill 185. I would like to begin saying that Tamooning is the best location for a new hospital for the people of Guam. When we look at our cousins in Honolulu, Honolulu, 70% of the population lives within 13 miles of downtown Honolulu. And when you look at the medical facility, the medical structure in Honolulu, you have 70% to 75% of the facilities, offices, doctors' offices, clinics, and hospitals, all within a three-and-a-half-mile stretch going from University Avenue on the east of Honolulu to North Vineyard on the west side of downtown Honolulu. So we have a similar situation here in Guam with about 90% of our medical practitioners' offices and facilities in Tamooning. That's why Tamooning makes the best option for a new hospital. Second, infrastructure is already in place for a new hospital. We're not going to have to wait 10 years to break ground for a new hospital in Tamooning like we would have to wait for a new hospital to even break ground out on Route 15. Because contrary to what Matrix says, I think their estimate of $100 million in infrastructure is way low when you consider the two miles of repaving and expanding Route 5 from two lanes to three lanes. To put a passing lane in to serve the bomb trucks moving between Camp Covington and the mag costs $15 million. So if repaving and one-lane expansion is $15 million, I submit that 12 miles of repaving, and that's not just Route 15. We're looking, we have to redo Route 10 as well. So we're looking at probably half a billion dollars in infrastructure that's just going to have to go in the roadways before we can break ground anywhere other than Tamooning. And we're probably going to look at another $100 million in utilities to break ground anywhere other than Tamooning. So when we're looking at the hospital, what is the function of the hospital? The hospital is served by 90% of the practitioners who do not work at the hospital, but use the hospital as an auxiliary to their facilities that are located in Tamooning. We have spent 60 years luring private practitioners to Guam to set up their practices, and they have done so at great personal cost and expense to set up their practices in Tamooning. We need to support the investment made by the private community to support a public hospital, and 90% of that private investment and practitioners and offices and clinics are in the Tamooning area. So we already have a medical complex that's in Tamooning. All we're talking about is taking our medical complex to the next level with a new hospital. And I think that we need to do that as soon as possible, especially when you consider that the lack of maintenance is the primary cause for the existing facility going down the toilet. Now, I say that because the number one reason the governor has given for a new hospital anywhere other than Tamooning has been salt spray. But when you look at all the hospital, I mean, all the hotels in the Tamooning area, some of them have been there longer than the existing hospital, yet they aren't being condemned. They aren't, people aren't endangering their lives by staying there or working there, simply because the owners of the hospitals had the will to take care of their facility, something that we have not seen in the 50 years that the government of Guam has running the hospital. Now, the governor claims the lots are too small in Tamooning, and I differ with that as well. When you consider that in Honolulu, we have four major hospitals being renovated and expanded to keep up with their growing population, and they're renovating and expanding while existing operations are taking place on lots as small as four acres. So when the governor claims that the lots are too small, I don't agree with that. Now, we heard that the Army Corps didn't find any fire ants. Had they done, found some, I would have said, hey, I had fire ants on my property, went to Home Depot, bought bait, and now we don't have any fire ants. The salt spray, again, we talked about it's whether or not, that's where a public-private partnership may come in, because look at JFK, how that public-private partnership has maintained that building, something that we haven't seen in the other school buildings. So my first slide, well, we've already seen Epa Point, and there is more than enough land to build on that facility a new hospital. The advantages of that, quick, easy access to 70% of the island's population, minutes away for 90% of the doctors, clinics, and offices to allow them promptly to serve their clientele who are using the hospital facilities. This site preserves the investments, the $100 million or more of private investments that have been made in our public healthcare facility on the private side. And it's, even though as a crow flies, the Attica site may be closer by mileage, but when you look at the condition of the roadways, the lack of lanes and the poor condition of the pavements, lack of traffic lights and stuff like that, driving from the Inilahan area up to Manila-Baragada takes longer than to drive from the southern part of the island to Tamooning. So if we go to slide number two, my second recommendation would be the site of the existing Guam Memorial Hospital, because even the existing site is big enough that we could build a brand-new hospital on the parking lot of the existing facility and utilize Oka Point as parking. Now, I am 69 years old and have arthritis and other mobility issues. It takes me less than 15 minutes to walk from the site to the old hospital to the current hospital, and the hospital could even put in shuttle service and use all those golf carts we bought for the COVID to run a ferry service from the parking lot to the old hospital while a new hospital is being constructed, and it would actually provide even more parking for people to go there. Because if you go to Guam Memorial Hospital between 7:30 and 5 o'clock, there's no parking for family members and damn near no parking for patients, because the entire parking lot is filled up with employees. Can we go to slide three? My third recommendation would be these three lots, which are owned by government of Guam, right there across from the post office, Tamooning Post Office and the ITC building. Those three lots right there would be big enough to build a hospital on. The infrastructure is already in place. Access is already in place. Utilities are already in place, and it is still in Tamooning area with 90% of the doctors' offices and clinics in close support. and it is still in Tamooning area with 90% of the doctors' offices and clinics in close support. And only that, building a large parking garage there will actually help ITC and all the government offices there. Because when you look, go to ITC, half the time I go to ITC, the entire ITC parking lot is filled up with employees, government employees, that are doing business, working at ITC to the point where we have to park in the auxiliary parking lots or park on different roadways. Next slide, slide number 4. Here is another about 13 and 1/2, 14-acre piece of land that would be more than big enough to build a hospital on. And it would be cheaper to move those schools and build state-of-the-art schools, which are badly needed, and build a hospital on this site than would be to put a half a billion dollars in infrastructure into Route 15 and Route 10 to be before we can turn and shovel the dirt for a hospital out in the Barragada-Manilo area. So this is proof positive that there's plenty of opportunity. Now, if we go to slide 5. This is Kapialani Women's and Children's Hospital. It has 209 beds, so it's already bigger than Guam Memorial Hospital. It sits on 4.8 acres of land and has a 300-car parking garage. Right now, slide 6. They are in the process of expanding it from 250,000 square feet of floor space to 450, from 209 beds to 253 beds, from 10,000 square feet, 12,000 square feet neonatal care unit to 50,000 square feet. And they're going from a 300-parking stall garage to a 1,000-stall parking garage on 4.8 acres. Next slide. Where the star is, is where I worked for 10 years, so I know this area very well. And Straub Hospital and Clinic right there is on 5, next slide. They're on a 5-acre lot. They are in the process right now of expanding their building from 200,000 square feet to 760,000 square feet. Bear in mind, this is while they have active medical operations taking place in the facility. They're going from 159 beds to 260. They're going from 400 parking stalls to 1,650 parking stalls on a 5-acre lot. So you can't say that the 20-plus acres at Epaup Point, the 13-plus acres at the elementary schools, the 18 acres at the current hospital, or the 12 and 1/2 acres down there by ITC Building are too small. Honolulu has proven to us that those lots are more than adequate to build a state-of-the-art hospital facility in Tamooning, which is what these people need. And it's badly needed, but we have to remember that the only thing we really need to build is a hospital. We don't need to build a new public health building. We have one, and if they would fix the ventilation fan, they could use it again. If they don't fix the ventilation fan, they can move up to the old Guam Memorial Hospital once we rebuild, build a new hospital. And then there's the "if you build it, they will come" fallacy. Our population is too small. Friday, my wife and I are flying off island for medical care we cannot receive here on Guam because our population is too small, and in spite of GRMC's best efforts, they can't get the specialists they need to relocate to Guam. We're going for orthopedics, so I submit Reno, Nevada, with 13 ski resorts generates a lot of orthopedic work, and that's where we're going. So no matter how luxurious an office we build in an effort to lure physicians to Guam, it's not going to work because if we do that, then we devalue all the investments all the private doctors and clinics have made building a public healthcare system that we have here on island today. So a medical complex is not needed, and it's not affordable because we already have one, and we can't afford to duplicate what has been built in the Tamooning Upper Tumon area out in Barragada-Manilo. We can't afford to build the infrastructure out in Barragada-Manilo because we would have to rebuild Route 10 and Route 15 before we can even start the hospital. And then even in one of the governor's presentations, she said, building out there, Barragada-Manilo, it would be 10 years to be fully operational. We can't, we can't wait 10 years. And as in 2016, and every report from the Centers of Medical Excellence, they have reported that 75% or more of the problems facing Guam Memorial Hospital were managerial, not structural. So if we build a new hospital out anywhere, I strongly recommend we bring in a federal receiver to run it and operate it. Because 50 years of government of Guam management have proven that if we build a new hospital and have government of Guam running it within a matter of years, like the museum just over here, we're going to have structural and operational problems because we do not have the political will to properly run and maintain a medical facility. And in conclusion, I would like to say that I was a little surprised when I heard Senator Fisher state in previous hearings that this is not the legislature's deal, that legislature needs to get out of the way and let the administration pick a site and build a hospital. I submit that 50 years of land use decisions made in this building, in fact, there was one year, I think it was 2014 or 15, that this legislature zoned in more land than the Land Territorial Planning Commission did. So this is the place. Because this is a policy decision. This body makes policy. And the policy should be that we will build a hospital in a place that benefits the people of Guam best, the medical community as well, and all for the benefit of the people of Guam. That location is in Tamooning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero. I'd like to also recognize Senator Joanne Brown for joining us. Thank you, Senator. Mr. Victor Duñez.
Victor Duñez from Inalahan. Toto Inalahanzo ye bonito na village. Anyway, before I start speaking, I want Dr. Akomoto to come down and check me if I'm drunk first. Because he called veterans old drunk veterans. I want to correct that. Do you see me right now drunk? I know he was referring it to me because he mentioned about agriculture. I don't work in that Department of Agriculture. He even make fun of me saying, "O dagaga." Yes, that's the name of that place, is a red land in Manila. I'm here, and I'm going to make it short, less than 5 minutes. Because I'm...
Sorry, I'm not putting a limit on your testimony.
I'm going to just limit myself because a lot of people here are going to testify.
Thank you.
I am here not to support Bill 185-37. I am here, and I did testify before, that I am in support on Bill 184-37, build it in the central part in Manila. Let me be closer from the south side to Manila. I went around talking to all my friends. And you know what they told me? More than 500, 600 people tell me that they agreed with the governor, build it on Manila on the central. Do you want me to take all those names and turn it in to prove it on those people that told me those things? More than 500, 600, that's how I've been doing, talking, and they all agree with me. They agree with the governor of what she's doing. Yes, Epaup Point is very small. We proved that before. It was an old hospital there before. We witnessed those things. Even parking lot, not enough spaces. I don't care if it's a beautiful view. We're not looking for a beautiful view. We're, I'm sorry, that's how I, that's the way I talk. I talk loud, I don't need no mic. They know when I talk, they think I'm getting mad and things like that. It's my voice. I was born and raised like this. So I'm going to just stop. And yes, Dr. Akomoto, I don't see you today. Come and check Mr. Duñez's head if I'm drunk. I'm going to keep repeating that. I'm going to go into the talk show and air this one because he's wrong. He's making fun of Mr. Duñez. And then he make all the veterans involved, they're all drunk. The governor don't send me down here. I came in, I came here, and I volunteered myself to testify here today. And hopefully, Senator, yes, Senator Fisher, I agree with you. Let's listen to the administration. Let her run the show. We know we disagreed and disagreed, but since the governor of Guam lets us listen to her, and when her term ends up, then we'll change to a new governor. And I know a lot of you up here, I could see that you guys are running for governor. But just put that on the side and let this administration do her job. She's listening to us too. 500 to 600 people told me that they agreed with Governor Lou Longrero and said, "Build it on the central part and just make it even. Tamooning, the south, central will be all fair." So I'm sorry if I hurt somebody. Sorry, Mr. Akomoto, where are you? Come here and check Mr. Duñez, please. Don't go out on the air and air us and make us look embarrassed out there. I want you to come here, check my head, check it 4 times to see if I'm a normal person. Sisus maasi, maramasala ma po. I want to apologize to all these doctors back of me. I love them. I'm not against them. Yes, they're, they're saving lives, but I want this hospital to be built in the central part. That's all. Sisus maasi, maramasala ma po, adios.
Sisus maasi, Mr. Duñez. Mr. Roslin.
My name is Benny Roslin. Before that, good afternoon, Senators and the Speaker. I'm just going to say this. I fully agree with Victor Duñez, but let me say this in tomorrow, okay? Tamooning, na lo got, and I disagree on 185-37. Put ro soon. Estanai crowded, bulat, tau tau, congested. Anginuna aten. Atenai manglu sia, pura sia, no e contamination. Mungu nusisia nei namanglu gina mamenu. Mano ano mogi, right? Anginuna aten nei. Congestite, disinya estan, atena. Igi trash sia, todu mangukupo. Anginuna aten, toduke, kentodu homeless, manasaka gi, eno na building. Presti moli, tekandusi, estan li os, os tudiasti. Anginuna aten, it's, it's Epaup. Ho in aten, zunaten sa. It's, it's a sasmi, sasmi. Vizu zu momo muddung, noksu, zakuna, earthquake, manmeki momo muddung. Presana pumiska zu, gui, watan, gua gui, cave, olum, presti moli na lei. Munga makemporai, okay. Guam is not extinct. I don't care about wahipofu, wahis. Estan tu ngambi, you know, manmeki masalapine. No, we're talking about Guam, my friend. Malaa zata titizi, zata osgi, putfabo, diplanun gebet nu. Si governor, Lulangi, estan Guam zu na plonu, estan liya na plonu, ana fandanya todusia na agencies. Timan manmado risia, na agency, manpura manmalo ki, mangaizi degri, amzgohu, seven zoku degree. Desi gi nei, na otitizi, esti manisron. Shetti zoku degree, anginuna aten. Aten Benny Roslin kamatsu, Roslin zan li. Zanunu talu nei, veteranu, army, the Marines. Freedom is not free. Mangaizi mbi, manmamasasapit, esti zapogu, pemalu manmamaduf. Li, putfabo, polu, espitot, gi, barragada mangila. So mos moli, zanunu bi, chiri itano, chiri itano. Bonito nei zan kaskas. Malaa zata, 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 my ribbon carding, zan li, okay, kesengan, under and two. My acres, right? My share monu bi, sinia noksa spita, sinia noksa gi, mentu facility, sinia noksa VA gui, sinia noksa, nampro, fido, gishe, shuni, takina, pogui, HMI, zogai, zogui, office. Sinia, todusia sia nei, if, if facility, na na hum. Munku nezusia, kentesti, kentesti, kentesti. Putfabo, babare, ititanus, zatanita, gini lai. For the people of Guam, putfabo. Sisus maasi.
Sisus maasi, Mr. Roslin. Mr. Siniklis.
Good afternoon, Senator Fisher, Senator Duñez, Senator Lohan, Senator Bernard, Burnett, Senator Talahi, Senator Brown, and Senator Taitegui. Good afternoon to all of you. My name is Benny Paulino Sanikulas, and I'm from Inalahan. I am here to testify against Bill 185-37. I am against this bill for the following reasons. Number 1, the location proposed for a new hospital in Tamooning is not in the best interest for the majority of the people of Guam. There is limited space and lacks room for expansion there. Number 2, the drive time from Inalahan to Tamooning is longer with more traffic congestion than the drive time from Inalahan to Manila, which could save many lives on emergency situations, especially for the people in the southern village like Inalahan. Number 3, government of Guam, directors and administrators from the Department of Land Management, the Ancestral Land Commission, Samuru Land Trust, Guam Memorial Hospital, Public Health, Veterans Affairs, GIDA, Mayor of Inalahan, Tony Chargaloff, myself, and others that have testified in favor of Bill 184-37, which proposes the new hospital and/or medical complex be built in Manila, Guam. I would like to reiterate that I am against Bill 185-37 and reaffirm my position that I am in favor of Bill 184-37, which proposes that the new hospital and/or medical complex be built in Manila, Guam. We just heard some of the comments of all the good things in Hawaii's medical complex. I want us to zero in for the proposed medical complex here in Guam. There are 2 proposals now. One, proposed by our good governor, Lou Longrero, and our good governor, Josh Tenorio. I have listened to their town hall meetings twice. They were all very informative. During that meeting, that meeting is open to the public. Everybody was invited to join and listen and learn. I did. During that meeting, she had her government of Guam... she had her government of Guam agencies, which I mentioned already. The director of land management testified or made a lot of good comments regarding the justifications why the new hospital should be built in Mangila, Guam. The director from Samoru Land Trust and Ancestral Lands have also justified and stated, both of them, that the best location is in Mangila, Barigada, Guam, central location of Guam. Okay? The director or administrator from Guam Memorial Hospital have testified during this hearing that Mangila is a better location than Tamuning, Guam. GIDA Administrator, Melanie Minjona, have testified regarding possible fundings. The veterans representative or director from that agency has spoken again, saying that the best location again is in Mangila, Guam. I came before you also, November 1st, that's only nineteen days ago, letting you know that I am in favor of the governor and lieutenant governor's bill to build the new hospital in Mangila, Guam. My mayor from Inalahan, Tony Charagla, one of the best mayor Inalahan ever have, and I'm very proud and blessed that we have that mayor now for Inalahan. He spoke along with me on November 1st here and he had justified beautifully why he is supporting the governor's bill to build that new hospital or medical complex in Mangila, Guam. The governor had done all her homework. She had all these very competent directors on the various agencies that impact this building of new complex, whether to build it in Tamuning or to build it in Mangila, Guam. They all have justified that the best location is Mangila, Guam. I trust our governor and lieutenant governor. They didn't just make irrational decision. Her decision and the lieutenant governor's decision were based on these specialists, these directors and administrators and her people. Just remember that all these agencies have specialists within their department. GIDA have financial specialists. Land Management have specialists in there, engineers. So all the justifications that needs to be answered have been answered by our good governor and lieutenant governor and all the government of Guam agencies that have direct impact in building this new hospital in Mangila, Guam and not Tamuning, Guam. Okay? So please, senators, I do not know what else you need to be convinced that the best location for the majority of the people of Guam is in Mangila, Guam, not special interest group. Okay? Senator Fisher, I wanna thank you. During the last testimony, you were reminding your colleagues to stay within your jurisdiction. If I may interpret that, stay in your lane. I really appreciate that. Because it's very easy for us to criticize people right and left. But in my opinion, from listening all of you and the governor and her directors, I am convinced that our good governor is very sincere that the best location for the majority of the people of Guam to have the new hospital built in Mangila, Guam. Senator Talahe, with your line of questioning with all these directors from the various agencies, I wanna thank you for those questions because you were asking very good technical questions. And I wanna thank all the directors for answering you to the best of their ability. And they justified their position why the new hospital should be built in Mangila, Guam and not in Tamuning, Guam. I really like to commend all of these directors, especially the director of land management, Mr. Bora. With your line of questioning, Senator Talahe, there were so many things that I learned through your questioning from the director of land management. There were, there were things that I did not know until you asked those questions. But you know what? Even before you asked those questions, I trust these directors. And also, senators, you should also trust them because I believe you confirmed them when they were appointed by the governor. I believe they were, they come before you for your confirmation. So I believe you gave them your blessing to be director. Now, I ask you to give the governor the blessing and all the directors the blessing so that we can move forward and build this hospital in Mangila, Guam. So just to again reiterate my position on Bill 185-37, I am against it for all those reasons that I have just mentioned. So with that, I wanna thank all of you senators for the opportunity and I look forward for your just and favorable decision to build the new hospital in Barigada, Guam. Because that's the best location for the majority of the people of Guam. So with that, I thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Sanikolas. Mr. Charagla.
Good afternoon, honorable senators. Buenas dan half a day. I am here to testify strongly against Bill 185-37 to build the new Guam Memorial Hospital at Saipun Point in Tamuning. My name is Kenneth P. Charagla, originally from Inalahan and now reside in Windward Hills, Jonia. Honorable senators, I am compelled to express my profound disappointment that our testimonies supporting Bill 184-37, given on November 1st and 3rd, were discounted, ignored, intentional and insensitive. We felt disrespected and our voices were unworthy. Bill 185-37 is corrosively flawed and defective. It does not take into account all of Guam. I must say with conviction that Bill 185-37 is designed to benefit a special interest group and undermine the people's vision of building a health services complex in one location. Some may argue that it would take ten years to build the Guam Memorial Hospital complex. Well, success is a process. Stopping it now does not make it faster. Bill 184-37 proposes a brilliant alternative for the location of the new Guam Memorial Hospital to be built in the Barigada-Mangila area based on the availability of a larger 102-acre lot, which will provide more space for expansion and ample parking for the hospital stakeholders. Conversely, Bill 185-37 supports the limitations of Saipun Point, where the old Guam Memorial Hospital is currently situated due to its small lot size, which poses challenges for accommodating the hospital's employees, visitors and parents' families. How does a 16-acre lot make more sense to House GMH, Public Health, Behavioral Health and Wellness Center and Veteran Affairs Clinic? We already know that the space at Saipun Point is very limited. We know that. Why go there? Tantamount to the current GMH location. So honorable senators, please don't get stuck on a 19th century mindset in a 21st century world. During the 2020 election year, all of you senators appealed to us, the common people and the middle working class, asking us to support your candidacy because you made us believe you are one of us and understand our struggles, our pains and our hurts. And yes, we trusted you and honored your words and commitment to help us lead a better quality of life. Now more than ever, we implore you senators to uphold the principles that inspired our trust and remain dedicated to providing high-quality health services to our island home. And if I sound like I'm begging, because I am, for all of Guam, frankly speaking, my trust and faith in a few of you is quite feeble. We believed in you when you asked us to trust you and to espouse confidence in you. And we did just that. And that's why you now hold an honorable and responsible position to become our ambassadors of hope for ordinary people, everyday people like us. So I come to you, so I come here to appeal to the wisdom of this body and to respectfully consider the lives of the people who live in the southern end of Guam. We lived throughout our lifetime with many challenges, living far from downtown Hagatnia, Tamuning, Tumon, Dedidu and Jigu, where most businesses are. Financial institutions, government agencies, hospitals, clinics, shopping centers and restaurants. Yet we endured and we embraced the wisdom of our past government leaders and we are equally grateful for the past entrepreneur's vision. As one who lives in the south, we must drive through winding roads, poor road conditions, steep and rolling hills, two-lane traffic, endure traffic congestion, really starting at the foothill of Chalabago, especially at 7:30 in the morning to downtown Hagatnia and Tamuning and an always drive, contrary to some of the comments made. Oh, it will take only 30 minutes, please. Inalahan is my hometown. I know how long it would take and that's breaking the traffic laws. Do you think I would drive 25, 35 miles per hour? Let's face it, all of us here are equally guilty. We drive beyond that, just to get, especially when inalahan, when we say we're going down to Hilton for a party. What do we do? We dress an hour and a half. We started living inalahan an hour and a half before the occasion in, in, within the central and northern area, 10 minutes drive. As one who lives in the south, I'm sorry, I can briefly describe that the distance between my home and hospital leads to longer travel time and delays in reaching the hospital can be critical when we need immediate medical attention. Poor road conditions combined with heavy traffic congestion, especially during peak hours, impede emergency services and timely arrival, exacerbating the overall travel time. The description above of one's hardship is edged from a personal experience. I've been a hard patient since birth and I regularly see my cardiologist and primary doctor. There were multiple times when I felt an urgent need to seek emergency medical care, but it was significant struggle to transport myself or even via ambulance to the current GMH. Sometimes the ambulance don't even show up. A couple of years ago, I felt tightness and pain in the chest, fatigue, lightheadedness and palpitation. My wife hurriedly drove me to the SDA clinic. This is early in the morning, 7:30. It was already very trafficky. Unfortunately, I was, my wife drove me to SDA clinic. Unfortunately, I was told to drive myself to GMH or GRMC because SDA could not do anything for me because it appears like I'm suffering of some kind of heart attack. I wasn't offered to be taken via ambulance by the doctors. So the argument that the distance of the doctor's clinic matter when a patient requires acute medical care is misleading, but ideal. Moreover, on November 3rd, 2020, at 5:00 PM, on the day of the senatorial and mayor election, I received a call from my brother, my oldest sister, who lived in Inalahan, had trouble breathing. We called 911 and requested an ambulance to transport my sister to GMH. I arrived at my sister's house in less than 10 minutes. No ambulance was inside. She peacefully passed away minutes later. Subsequently, the fire truck arrived, fire truck, to transport my sister to GMH, but it was already too late. A fireman later told me that there was no ambulance available in Inalahan, no Motec, Talfoku or Haugat at the moment. Eventually, an ambulance arrived in just over an hour or so. I believe it's an hour and a half. Then we had to wait for the police. Today, I ask you to place yourselves in our shoes. I come to you with an impassioned plea, an impassioned plea and hear the cries of the south and feel our pains, our hurts, our troubles and agonies. Senator Telo Taitegui, you are one of us, our proud daughter of Inalahan. You understand the pains and the hardships of the south. I must equally believe that our esteemed Senator Chris Burnett feels our pain as she once lived in Inalahan for a few years. Now we have the opportunity to select a more centralized area to build the GMH medical complex and to service and benefit all of Guam. For the first time in our history, we would have increased response time to receive medical services, usually taking 45 minutes to an hour drive from southern Guam to GMH. Imagine if our government leaders and the American Medical Association of Guam were to propose and be firm in their decision to build that new GMH in Dundan, Inalahan. And we dismiss the hardship, travel time and timely medical emergency care of our people who live in the northern, central and western Guam. This is plainly unacceptable and wrong. The speaker told me on November 1st that this body has to weigh between 20 million to improve the infrastructure in Saipun Point and 100 million to build the infrastructure in Mangila. No amount can equal one life of a human being. Life is priceless and irreplaceable. I am highly encouraged that our governor has aligned herself with the people's vision to propose the new Guam Memorial Hospital complex. to propose the new Guam Memorial Hospital complex to be built in Manila to benefit all of Guam. She understands our pains and endeavors to give us hope. Honorable senators, I pray you share the same vision as the people in tandem with the governor and understand our pains. I view you as the people's ambassadors of hope. Give us hope and respond to the cries of our hearts. Senators, it requires responsible leadership for thoughtful planning and consideration to care for all the lives, for the lives of all. Our brothers and sisters who live in the south, in the north, central, and western Guam have the minimum benefit of seeking acute care at G R M C or Guam Naval Hospital at a moment's needs. So senators, this is a unique case, a unique case and a grand opportunity that you must view with compassion and empathy, compassion and empathy. I appeal to your wisdom not to make decisions without considering the consequences. In some cases, we compel the law to let justice prevail. We will hold our government leaders responsible when they decide to harm Guam's future and future generations. Senators, our lives reside in this body's caring, conscientious, and responsible hands. A reasonable government leader will thoughtfully and responsibly support the new medical campus to be built at a centralized location to benefit the entire Guam, including those of us residing from afar. The southern people's lives matter too. Please, senators, kill Bill one eight five dash thirty seven. Thank you for your time and your favorable consideration. Isaila Sotseus Massey.
Sotseus Massey, Mr. Charagelov, Dr. Wen.
Hi, thank you so much. I think I have a PowerPoint I sent you. I think this should be. Hi, thank you so much. And you know, for the last four hearings, we hear a lot of opinion based on study and finding and guessing for the future. There's still, there's a lot of misconception that where the location should be built and what the best for the people of Guam. So I just put a presentation today, just a location of the new hospital, G M H, and I tell you, I agree, timely response is life and limb. And I will explain more on why the time response is life and limb. It's very important. It's based on data, what we see in our practice. It's not, no, on a patient perspective, not on the physician perspective. We all forget the healthcare in Guam is very important. It's a public-private partnership. It's not just public, it's not just private. We have to work together in order for the healthcare of Guam to get better. So it's not public and it's not private. It's got to be both. And you know, and we just have to look back. We just get back from three years of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And refresh your memory back in March or April of two thousand and twenty, when we first have a case with COVID in Guam. I tell you, everything shut down. All the clinic, including public health, shut down except G M H E R, G R M C, and the tier two. We stay open regular hours to see all the patients. As a small clinic like One Love, a Guam medical care for Dr. Galgo, that's a private. The majority of the healthcare in Guam during pandemic, when everyone shut their door and stayed home because they were really scared. The majority of care is private, only G M H E R. And you know, we go to work, we go home, we sleep out corner, we stay with our family, just like you are. We are scared that we're going to die the next day. And who's there? The private. Okay, and we work with G M H E R to keep our door open. Even after a while, public health open, but only by appointment for sick visit. They do not see all the walk-in. You know, tier two, A M C, S D A, F H P, and two dismembered clinic will open in regular hours. We see all the sick visit as you walk in. We cannot refuse you. It's a government order. We step up at the private, and we see everybody. We don't turn anyone away. And we don't charge anybody. We see everyone at no cost, and we take our risk. Again, G M H E R, the only one open. The Guam National Guard, you can't thank them enough. I tell you, those guy, they work for testing and immunization, can't do without them. So it involves everybody. Tier two clinic, I'm the chair of the governor at that time for COVID nineteen. You know, A M C S D A and F H P, we open seven days a week, Saturday, Sunday, holiday. Every day to do testing is to see sick visit. We don't close. Public health close, weekend, they close, holiday. We stay open. So it got to be both a private and public. It's not just us or the government. It's not. It has to be both. COVID nineteen immunization, I'm sure most of you guys have it. No, it's ordered by the governor. And guess who's doing a lot of immunization? Private clinic and the guard. Okay, so we all have to exist, so we cannot forget this. It's a private-public partnership. Recent typhoon, Maor, American Red Cross, they do great service, but limited resource they have. Guess who stepped up to see the shelters? The private clinic. Public health is nowhere to be found. Okay, so where are we going to serve the indigenous population, the people that lost their home the most? It's the public. It's not, public health, the private are there. We see them all. Again, at no cost anyone. Where the public health does, I have no idea. I have to ask the same question the same time. Medicaid M I P, that's about forty thousand of our indigenous population, our population in Guam have M I P Medicaid. Public health system is not supposed to do any health clinic at all, not the majority U S population. In Guam, they do, but they cannot afford to serve all this M I P Medicaid. And who stepped up to see the private clinic again to assist public health and see M I P Medicaid? And you know, the majority of the surgery at G M H not provided by the G M H employee specialty, the majority is by the private side of the house. It's not G M H physician that do the majority of the surgery. So again, it's a public-private partnership. Okay, so I'm going to talk about medical complex, where everyone in here talks about it versus the hospital only, and why we need such a huge acre to build in Manila or just the smaller acres in Ipau. Okay, you have Department of Public Health, you have Mental Health, Physician Office Building, and Veteran Hospital wings. The veteran clinic, as I stated in the past, our local government have no say. This is a federal level that the Department Veteran Affairs want to put a clinic here or not. And they prove their point. They sign a contract with G R M C to open and expand to C B O C, wonderful for our veteran here in Guam. And they're going to commit a better outpatient service for veterans, and that's good for them. But again, the veteran wing, we talk about it. Pharmacy, everywhere in Guam have pharmacy, where you can't even go anywhere without pharmacy. Down south, up north, central, everywhere they go there. And C D C lab is off the maps, only four things on medical complex. Public health. Again, I got to remind everyone, public health and the main target for them is the indigenous population and the disabled population. It's not for everybody. You don't see the regular person, the middle class will go to public health, get the social service, get the Medicaid, M I P, or get foot stamp. It's really served for the indigenous and the disabled population. We do a lot of medical mission throughout Guam, up north, down south in Inarahan. And the biggest complaint that people everywhere, they don't have no transportation, they don't have a phone. They cannot go to public health because it's too far for them to get there. That's a public health man thing to be, not to centralize in one place, but need to put location everywhere in the community, including down south and everywhere in Guam for this population, the people to get access. They can walk to it, they can do there rather than have transportation. So they don't need to be centralized. You know, I just listened to Arts and others saying the medical complex, public health there, it mostly administrative office to consolidate every service they have. How do people in Inarahan going to drive to public health to do the process for their paperwork? How do people in Jigo, where the most dense population, they don't have transportation, how they going to get there? Put location where these people are and not centralizing for convenience of public health. That's the main target, public health. You know, I pass by public health Manila every day. I look at that building, I say, wow. That building is deteriorate every day without anything on it. That's a government building, if I'm mistaken. Public health don't want to fix it. It's just empty building. They keep building one for what reason? They don't serve any central location because that building is closed now for many years now. I heard several things about public health and what they're going to do at the medical complex. I tell you, I hear in a lot of complaint that a lot of people from Inarahan say they have no care. You have, you have care. You have an Inarahan public health down there, that beautiful, large building that have absolutely minimal service to the people down there. Remember, your clinic care management is from the outpatient clinic. Certain public health in Inarahan need to open a clinic just like anyone else, six days a week to serve the people down there. Why you have to drive all the way to central Manila to get care? You don't have to. So demand that care from your government and ask public health to augment the service down there, including all the administrative service. You don't need to drive all the way up central and do anything. You know, what frustrates us on the primary care is that immunization for indigenous population. You have to make appointment to go to public health to get immunization. In private side, we open from eight to nine. You walk in, you get your shot. That should be the care that everyone in Guam deserve, including people in Inarahan. There's no excuse for not to provide that through public health. They talk about medical complex for public health. They're going to do transitional care medicine. And if I can take one minute to educate people in here, transitional care medicine is you get admitted to the hospital, and when you get discharged, you have to follow up with your primary care physician within seventy two hours. Public health in the entire history, I know, never have that duty to do because they don't have the expertise, they don't have the physician, they don't have the manpower to do that. If you, if they're going to take that task over, very high liability for public health and very dangerous to the patient that's get discharged. Those are very complicated patient that even us, very seasoned provider, that we are scared to take care of. Now you're going to trust that to public health? I do not think so. And that's an honest opinion unless they improve their quality of care a whole lot and hire a lot of internists to run the program. You're going to put your life at risk when you go there. Okay, behavioral health. You just hear they have a new federal grant to build a new wing at the current footprint. Why they want to build a new wing and then several years later move to different location, it absolutely make no sense. Behavioral health specialists have no privilege in the hospital, none. So there's no relationship between the two. Yes, they have transfer, but it's not like everyday transfer. They need to be done that. Medical complex, the physician office building. There's a plan for a hundred and twenty physician office building. All the primary care and the small number special we have in Guam have their own practice. They not going to move into the physician office building. You're going to have a huge building that's empty. The annex in front of G R M C is the same concept, and you don't have anyone moved that space until now that the new V A C B O C clinic will be in there. Before that, the building is empty. So why do you want to waste hundreds of millions of your taxpayer money that your children and generation of people are going to have to pay for this death for an empty building that's not going to be used? The veteran hospital wing, I'm a veteran. I worked at C B O C before. I'm a physician there. I know how the system work, and yes, I agree, open an office for care for veteran is a much needed Guam. Open a hospital wing is two totally different thing. A clinic is scaled from one to ten, a hospital wing is a ten out of ten. You have to have the staff, the clinical staff, the admit staff, the nursing staff to staff that. It costs a bunch. Is the Department of Veteran Affairs going to pay for it? Or our local government will pay for it? Anyone have an answer? Nobody. Who's going to staff it? You know, the C B O C right now have the, have the high, Guam had the hardest time to recruit physician to just to staff the outpatient clinic. Now you want a hospital wing? It's not going to happen unless somebody up in Washington decide they're going to do that. And it's not very cost effective for the veteran to do that. So we cannot promise our veteran for something that we are not a hundred percent that we can deliver. I promise you, as a veteran, maybe you have ten percent or less on this promise. So I wouldn't promise the veteran. Travel time, this is, I'm looking at a different form, and again, I hear in Inarahan, I tell you, you guys need to get the government and augment the clinic down there for you because that's their responsibility. Now, everyone talking about travel time in Guam from one location to Manila. As a patient, let me ask you, how many time in a year that you need to travel to the hospital? Hopefully, none. If you really have bad condition, then I feel for you, but the majority people only have to drive to hospital, none or one or two times a year. Okay, as an employee of the hospital, we have over a thousand employee in the hospital. How many times they have to drive to the hospital? To the hospital? Every day. And every one of those, including my nursing staff, when they work for me, I know where they have their daycare, they know what they do with extra stuff because I place them different location, my clinic depend on where they have their daycare for their kids or whatever. You're going to affect a thousand employee to change You gonna affect 1,000 employee to change their daycare center where they comfortable with their children, their daily activity that they've been doing for so many years around Tamooning and you expect them to drive every day to go to location far away than their daily routine? That's over 1,000 employee. As a physician, this is very important about my slide when time respond. Okay, I hear people in the past say that you go to hospital, get admitted and you call and physician never come. That's not an emergency. Physician have clinic during the daytime. So when you have an admission for their, for their patient, they got a phone call from the hospital and they will give verbal order throughout the phone to make sure the patient have care, have order to, for the nursing staff to carry. Those are regular admission. But for emergency situation, life or limb, when you call the physician, the clinic, they don't give verbal order, they leave the clinic, leave every patient that they have during the appointment and they run to the hospital. That's emergency case. You know, it can happen daytime, it happen nighttime, but that's when you call, they come because emergency life and limb. But if you get admitted, you get stabilized by the ER physician already, yes, they call and they give verbal order. Trust me, they know you there, but they will come afterward, they will see you. So when you talking about when they call and no one come, just because those are routine admission is not an emergency. So you have to understand when the two. For most physician clinic is in Tamooning and they have a life and limb emergency from Tamooning to EPO is five to 10 minutes. From Tamooning to Manila location, a life and limb, you're gonna wait half an hour, 45 minutes for your doctor get there, you gonna be in trouble already. So that's the difference when just a regular admission and emergency, especially at nighttime. For travel time, again, as a patient, I would demand public health provide full outpatient service both north and south, full means six days a week. That's what the private side we do for outpatient. We don't close. You know, we open every day for you and we open for walk in and that's just appointment. You know, I can see in two, three hours, the same amount of one provider, public health see the whole day. It's very inefficient and that's what you should demand anywhere, location, including Inarahan, to have that type of care. Again, hospital is the last resort for you. That's the last. Your chronic care management, your health depend on the outpatient service. So depend what keep you outside the hospital and not wait until you hit the hospital. Medical complex, boy, I tell you, it costly, billions. No one know where the bill gonna come from. Who pay for this? We keep say the federal, we promise federal gonna pay anything in writing? Nothing. Your children, your generation, your family will have to pay for this, billions, not just a few hundred millions. And medical complex is unreasonable, that just, I just go over the slide with you, there no necessity or positive outcome for co-location with public health, which they should be everywhere. Behavioral health should not be there because they have a new wing, physician office, who's gonna go in there? And hospital wing, who's gonna staff it? So those are stuff are very unreasonable and you cannot accept that because it's not free. Someone have to pay for it and I promise you, you will be the one that pay for it. So the only solution to improve the healthcare of Guam, I tell you, hospital only and not a medical complex. And you need to demand a right size hospital that well equipped. Right now, again, we have a nursing staff to run 100 to 120 bed hospital. Leonard, you can just speak me with that one you want, but I don't think you will. You don't want to build 200, 300 hospital bed, who gonna run this hospital bed? You are parking in the garage, in the ER homeways, not because there's no room upstairs. They cannot bring you upstairs because there's no nursing staff to watch you. That's why you're in the homeways. Okay, so why we build something that we're gonna echo throughout the hospital because no one to be there to run for you? You wanna plan the hospital? Get the medical executive committee, including all the physician hospital, to give you guidance of how to build a hospital. Hospital 300 bed in one level? I bet you half the people in this room have handicap parking. Are you gonna walk on that wing to walk from one end of the hospital to the next? We better have some belt or something because you can't walk that far. The parking lot, every one of you have handicap parking. 1,000 parking space, it's better to build up in the garage, you don't have to walk that far. Those are stuff that only the physician, the medical staff will understand what you need, not department land management. Trust me, every one of them will come and say, can I have a handicap parking? You're gonna park way out there, that's like a Disneyland thing, they have a go-kart to, to get you from the parking space to the hospital. Location, I agree with Bill 185. EPO is a key. The old hospital is there before. The reason we abandoned because we don't have any maintenance. We know that. If you do a maintenance correctly, that hospital would last already. It's not because it, it falling down from the earthquake or anything like that, it's just because we have no, we have very poor maintenance. Southern High, Simon chances, now I look at the Gania Museum, they all kind of run down because there's no maintenance. So it's just the location very important for you because it's an emergency situation with life and limb threatening. You don't want to wait for this, for your doctor to drive that far to see you. The new hospital, we need it, we need it now. The infrastructure is there at EPO already, you don't have to build that much infrastructure. The former site previous hospital is proven to be there already. And the current GMH situation, I tell you, I passed saying, look, I passed, this past weekend, I said, wow, we are really in bad shape. So we really need to build as quick as possible, we don't need to build the infrastructure. We just need a hospital to take care of the patient. And I, I don't, I don't speak for special group, I don't speak for the physician, I speak for my patient and that's what it count for. You know, I have a letter that we submitted to, to the senator through the three large clinic, AMC, FHP and SDA, and I hope you have because we all support EPO because again, we have 120,000 patient, that's almost more than 230 island. And we say that not because where we are, we say that because our patient. Today, from our clinic, AMC Manila, one from AAC, two month, we transfer patient already to the hospital. And we do that every day. So please think about it. Again, it's, it's not a cheap venture, you wanna go in there and you cannot, and everything I present to you is the fact, it's not a study. You know, so Senator, you have all the vote there, a few vote make a difference, Senator Brown was saying the right thing. A few vote make a big difference and a big difference is that you can even move the healthcare of Guam forward or you move it backward. And I believe that EPO will move to healthcare Guam forward and not backward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. Dr. Lim.
Honorable Speaker Peralha, Honorable Senator Barnett, honorable members of the Guam Legislature, good afternoon. My name is Dr. Ray Lim and I work as an anesthesiologist at GMH. I am here on behalf of the members of the anesthesia department of Guam Memorial Hospital and we do support Bill 185-37. We have heard already testimony from Mr. Leon Guerrero, Dr. Wen, opening remarks by Senator Barnett, and there are very logical reasons why we support the bill. I'm not gonna bore you anymore with, by repeating any of those facts. And I would just like to say that basically, keeping the location of, of the new hospital near proximity to this different, almost majority of the clinics, the Guam Surgery Center, Guam Radiology Center, you know, it's putting patients first and will save lives. That's all. Thank you.
This is Masih, Dr. Lim. We did receive that written testimony on behalf of the anesthesiologists at GMH. All right, I wanna thank the panel. Are there any very quick questions for this panel? If not, we'll go to Senator Taitigui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, good afternoon to my fellow residents of Inarahan. And thank you for being here to testify and for yourself, Mr. Leon Guerrero, thank you for continuing on and, and fighting for with the best interests of Guam on the Guam Memorial Hospital. I just have a real quick question. Dr. Lim, correct, the anesthesiologist, you said that you work for Guam Memorial Hospital and that you represent the other anesthesiologists, correct?
Yes, as private citizens.
And many of you, many of the doctors there that are anesthesiologists not only work for Guam Memorial Hospital, but also go to other clinics nearby the area?
Some of them do.
Okay, and because of this, it, it just makes it more convenient for you to be able to service Guam Memorial Hospital as well as the other clinics, is that correct?
I, I think it's more of like, when I first arrived here in 1999, actually when I got interviewed, one of the things that they, I would say, kind of like requested or even demand is that basically you have to live close by the hospital. I cannot even go far away where at least if I buy a house, basically it's cheaper, right? But Tamooning is just so expensive. But we were really told that we have to be close by the hospital. That is a requirement for employment. I mean, of course, they didn't say it in writing, but it's understood.
It makes it easier for many doctors actually to, to address that. And so that means as well, not just only living, but working to be able to provide other clinics, you know, that service that you have.
Yes, I mean, some do, I mean, I personally don't, so I couldn't speak.
But some do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher, quick questions for this panel?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. I don't know if the people in the room and the people listening are aware of the fact, but we received a message, a press release, I suppose, from the office of the governor.
For this panel, sir? You have questions for this panel?
Yes, I do.
All right, please state your question.
Okay. Again, I don't know if you were aware of it, but the governor issued a press release, I suppose, this afternoon and it says, and this is a quote, "Should the Guam Legislature force Governor Lou Leon Guerrero to build a new hospital and medical complex at EPO Point, the entire project may be dead on arrival. This single act would make it extremely difficult to borrow money on the bond market for its construction, whether directly or by leaseback." According to the Guam Economic Development Authority, Bond Council, that's OREC, "Construction on a fault line would require disclosure to potential investors, which would in turn make marketing bonds extremely difficult." Obviously, the governor knows that if we can't finance it, it's dead, if it has to be in Tamooning. She's aware of that. And one of the things I would ask if anybody has an observation on, the bill we've received, 185-37, which I hope you all have read, if you haven't read it yet, you can easily find it on the Guam Legislative website. This bill requires the construction of a new hospital in the village of Tamooning. Now, we all know where Tamooning is, but as a political matter, none of us know where Tamooning is. No political map was attached, so I don't know if the Hilton is in Tamooning or it's not in Tamooning. We weren't informed what the village of Tamooning is. Again, I'm not being facetious. We all know where, we all think we know where the village of Tamooning is, but this is a question that will have to be answered. And perhaps when the bill moves on to the floor, we'll get a political map attached. That would be very, very helpful. And ma'am, just a few, just another observation, this bill, 185-37, is by its very nature a special interest bill. This bill speaks about the doctors, it speaks about 75% of the island's medical clinics are located within a certain vicinity, names the clinics and tells us that the doctors, the medical associate and the medical society want the hospital built for their convenience in Tamooning because it's allegedly close to their clinics. Doesn't say a word about the convenience of the veterans. Says nothing about the interests of the residents of Gigo or Dedodo or Baragada, Inarahan, Humatic, any other village, it's all about the doctors. We'll be building a new hospital, you know, come hell or high water, we're gonna build a new hospital, but we're going to do it for the benefit of the people of Guam. We're not going to do it for the benefit of well-heeled members of our community who are carrying mortgages on property that they have bought and built. So I wanted to make that, and earlier we had heard about the matrix study. If, if we look at the matrix study, you'll note that none of the factors are weighed. We don't know which of the factors is more important than the other and the difference between EPO Point and Atacau is only four, four, the spread is four points. So it's essentially a tie and according to the experts, we've heard testimony in prior hearings, our experts from the government of Guam tell us that the best place to build this is in fact Atacau and not, not in Tamooning. Well, I'm inclined to listen to them because a simple observation is, no one in this room, including myself, is an architect. No one in this room, including myself, is a traffic engineer. No one, including myself, in this room, as far as I know, is a civil engineer. No one in this room has a degree in hospital administration or management, yet we are all weighing in and telling the experts what it is that they should do. The experts have told us where to build the hospital and this is the executive, you've heard me say it before, this is the executive branch's decision to make and I respect that. The point is that earlier when we said, you know, question or statements, I don't think this, I don't think that, there are people who do think things and they are the experts. So this is not about a vested financial interest of anyone, this is about the interest of not us. You look around the room, most of us are middle aged, we'll be dead, most of us in 30 years, that's just a fact. This is for our grandchildren and I completely disagree with the statement earlier made by one of the testifying witnesses that we can't do this because we lack the political will and when we look around, we see that things aren't going quite as well as we would hope them to go and that's true, but Guam can do this. I don't, I absolutely have every faith in the world that the government of Guam can build this medical complex. So I have to reject that statement. And just a few more comments, ma'am, and then I'll wrap it up.
No questions?
I don't really wanna beat a dead horse on this, but...
No questions for this panel?
So...
Can I excuse them?
I'm sorry.
Can I excuse the panel if you have no questions for them?
Yeah, I have a question. Hey, panel members, do you think we should listen to the experts or a bunch of blubbing senators? Thank you.
Who's that for? Which, which person?
Ma'am, anyone's free to answer the question, just anyone.
Dr. Wen, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, I, I think again, the number one thing is that all the testimony we give is not for special interest, is the physician office is building around the hospital. It's the physician office building around the hospital, just like Dr. Lim said, to support the hospital. You know, again, the hospital, most of the specialty surgery is from the private side of the house, not from GMH.
Sir, do you think we should rely on the experts?
You know, we are the expert. We are practicing medicine. We take care of you when you're sick, you know? Yes, we are the expert in medicine, yes. Just like you are the lawyer, we are medicine, we are doctors, okay? We are, we can speak for, on behalf of our patient, wish they trust their life on us. So we are the expert, okay? So when we tell you that we talk about the response time for our patient, just like Dr. Lim, I want to answer that for you, is that the reason that they have to live within five to 10 minutes of hospital, because anesthesia does not sleep in the hospital. At nighttime, when you call for emergency, you have an accident, a car accident, you have to come in, go through surgery, if they don't respond in five to 10 minutes' time, you're going to die. ER physicians can only do so much, but they can't even go to Agate to have dinner unless they arrange someone to cover for them. Because, yes, their response time is very important, so the hospital does depend on them. They don't depend the hospital. So, yes, the location of hospital where Tamooning, Epaupoint, is very important. And to answer your question, yes, we are the expert on our opinion of where the hospital are the best thing to care for our patient.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. All right. I'd like to thank again all of you, and you're excused. We're going to call the next panel. Mayor Luis Rivera, Mayor Ernest Chargalov, Nurse, I think it, it says Nurse Guaire? Guaire? Mr. Flores? What's that? Nurse Grace? All right. We'll begin with Nurse Grace. Sorry, press the button, yeah.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, senators. My name is Grace Navasca. I'm a licensed practical nurse, and I work for Dr. Shea, and I also work along with Dr. Harata, our maternal fetal specialist. He asked me to read his testimony in support of Bill 185-37. Dear Honorable Speaker Terlai and Honorable Senators of the 37th Legislature, I write as a physician specialist who has served thousands of pregnant mothers of Guam, I wish to express my strong support for Bill 185-37. I am a double board certified in maternal fetal medicine and medical genetics. Maternal fetal medicine, also known as perinatology, which is a field of medicine that focuses on managing health concerns of the mother and fetus prior to and shortly after birth. Over the last 15 years, I have the privilege to care for and consult on thousands of Guam's high-risk pregnant mothers and their babies. As a specialist physician leader in this field, I have seen the results of healthcare errors in planning and mismanagement over the years that have led to the health emergencies resulting to the loss of lives that otherwise could have been prevented. I have visited Guam Memorial Hospital maternal fetal area and also spoken to many of Guam's local OB-guys on many occasions with regards to the system of care in Guam. It is not surprising to understand their frustration with the lack of a voice in this process of building a new hospital. In the field of obstetrics, it's high risk in itself. Even with low-risk pregnant moms, things can go wrong at any stage of the laboring process, to which the OB-guy must respond to promptly. Currently, 100% of your OB-guys are located within 15 minutes of Epaupoint, and this alone should convince the senators to vote favor of Bill 185-37. One cannot ignore the value of response time in the field of obstetrics in saving the lives of women and children. Additionally, Guam's populations of pregnant mothers are very high-risk. The population for gestational diabetes, congenital anomalies, and hypertension is extremely high, and these conditions contribute to a high rate of mortality and morbidity. This is where the continuity of care is important, and Epaupoint remains the best location. I am sure there have been many direct transfers from their clinics to the current hospital due to the need for immediate admissions. This point must be taken seriously. Coming in from Hawaii, I have seen Guam's medical complex built around Epaupoint, and it is impressive. I have seen the growth of the medical sector in Tamooning over the past last two decades, and the quality of healthcare has definitely risen. There is no need to build a medical complex because it already exists near Epaupoint. One argued that public health must be next to the hospital on the same campus, but that is just not true. Comparing to another island, none of the major Honolulu hospitals have public health centers or administrative buildings on campus, none, and this is obvious. The reason of the majority of continuity of care, even with the indigenous population, is private clinics or outlining public health centers in different areas around the island. This makes for better access. Bill 185 is what Guam's current urgent needs should be focused. Please pass it for the benefit of the people of Guam, especially for the women and children. Thank you. And this letter is from Dr. Harata, board-certified fellow maternal fetal medicine and genetics. I also have another letter in favor for the bill. This is from Guam pediatricians. Dear Honorable Speaker Terlai and Honorable Senators of the 37th Legislature, hafade. We are a group of pediatricians who would like to voice our overwhelming support in favor of Bill 185-37 to build a hospital in Tamooning-Epaupoint. Our opinion is based on our collective experiences as pediatricians who have taken care of the most vulnerable of our population, the newborns, infants, and children of our island. For more than 20 years, we have responded to emergency calls and transferred patients directly from our clinic to GMH to ensure their well-being and prevent loss of lives. From premature and full-term babies that needed resuscitation, to infants, childrens, and adolescents with respiratory distress, we all, we all know and have witnessed the grave consequences of a delay in care in a matter of few minutes. This is the reason why the hospital needed to be built in Tamooning-Epaupoint, the most central of all locations being considered. Building the hospital here will ensure that such consequences can be avoided and minimized. As physicians, we are trained to first do no harm and work in the best interests of our patients. As pediatricians, we speak for our children and their families. We have heard the different arguments for and against Bill 185-37, and have thought about the different scenarios and discussed it extensively with other colleagues who have not yet made up their minds. In the end, we believe that the bill, 185-37, is what our children need and what is best for Guam. We need a hospital built in Tamooning-Epaupoint, a place that can be accessed easily from different parts of the island, from all the pediatrician's clinics around the island. We stand with the most of the medical community who have voiced their support in this bill. We are hoping that the honorable senators will listen to the different, different medical providers who want what is best for their patients and take our testimony to heart and base your decision on what is best for our island, especially for our children. Thank you for your time in advance for accepting our testimony of Bill 185-37. Respectfully, and these are the pediatricians who signed, Dr. Maria Blankeflor, Dr. Dina de Malanta Villaluna, Dr. Antonia Garcia, Dr. Yolanda Carrera, Dr. Christina Manaloto, Dr. Gladys Linsangan, Dr. Dennis Sarmiento, Dr. Mellet Fojas, and Dr. Anna Santos. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grace, for reading the testimonies of those two, the physician and the, the group of pediatricians. This is Masih. Mayor Chargalov?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For the record, my name is Ernest Chargalov. I'm the current mayor of Maleso. Senators, I'm here in opposition to Bill 185-37. As you guys can recall, I testified in favor of 184-37. The other southern residents that were here echoed my sentiments and I shared an experience when I had to take my wife to GMH's. So the distance and travel time, it matters because when you factor in traffic, so the travel time is almost the same. But the thing is, like I said, what is the CROX? We're going to build a hospital. Already, the medical complex concept, I've seen it, I've heard it, they had informational meetings. And as a resident of Maleso, and more so as the mayor of Maleso, I want to make sure that I, I testify so that I can bring convenience and travel time, cut the travel time from Maleso all the way to Tamooning. Nobody can know exactly what's the difference unless you take a odometer and you go all the way up from Maleso, from one point to the other point, all the way to GMH, the emergency, and to over to GMH that's going to be built in Mangino. But like you said, I brought my wife there, I stopped by at, when she had a problem, she was having a hard time breathing, she was throwing up. I got up the southern Humatic Fire Station, nobody was answering, so I drove her down there and I stopped by, I started sounding the horn, and, you know, there was nobody that came out. So I guess, I don't know, maybe the attendant was in the restroom or something, so I decided to go. So I enrolled a code 911. I said, "My wife is having a hard time breathing. She's throwing up. I need help. I, there's no ambulance." Only to get, there's no ambulance in Agate either. There's no ambulance in Pidi, and the only ambulance available was the ambulance from Tamooning. So even with my, with my hazard lights on, I was sounding the horn, maybe they don't want to concede. They probably think this is a false driver. But when I got to, I got near, it even got worse because there was more, there were more cars. And I can't, you know, I wanted to drive, but, you know, in the haste to get my wife to the hospital, we might both end up in the hospital as well. So when we got there, you know, they asked me if I want to wait for Tamooning. No, can they meet me en route? Because we're moving forward instead of staying, staying stationary. It's only right that I keep going forward. When we got to the hospital, you know, I wanted to get down and see what, I was told that the visiting and the emergency was suspended, so I had to go somewhere else and kill the time until I was ready to pick her up. But senators, Bill 185 is just counter to 184. A lot of people have testified it's special interest. Doctors say it's emergency, when times of emergency, when time is of the essence. I don't care if you're the specialist, if you're going to die, but there are 10 minutes, but it's the CROXes to try to help that patient, to hopefully save that person's life. Now, if you go there, doctor, the, the clinics, they come there when there are only minor aches and pains, and then the doctor will make the assessment whether they can do a referral to have them committed for further observation. But not every day that you guys have emergencies. So I don't know whether it's for special interest, I don't know if it's for time and convenience, but all I know is that when the last time I said the CROXes to build a new hospital, and 184-37 addresses that we can build a hospital, a public health center, I believe, a public health center, a behavioral clinic, health for mental health, a veterans clinic, a specialty care clinic, in addition to these things, we have the medical providers offices within one, one site. As my friend over here testified, we can dream big. Why, why stop now? Let's plant the seed so that we can eliminate also the need for government entities to be renting private properties. People are cashing in and building buildings so that they can be occupied by the government. Now we have an opportunity to use 102 acres to try to situate all these health and welfare agencies within one site. Because the health and welfare is all tied in together. Public health provides for health as well. They have nurses, they have, you know, doctors, but they also give services for food, standard welfare. So when you go there, you can go there and, and see them instead of going to one entity in one place and going to another. Senators, you know, we've got to start somewhere, somehow and sometime. And now, you know, we're going to do things, we might as well incorporate everything, put our minds together and work together so that we can address the situations that we are facing. We always look back instead of trying to look forward. The doctors, I know that they're trying to protect their interests as well because, you know, they said they can save their lives. But like I said, I don't care how many specialty doctors you have, if it's your time to go, I believe in that. So I don't care whether you provide CPR, CPS, whatever you want to call it, if that patient is going to die, I'm sorry. But the CROXes, we're going to build a hospital. Why not think big? One billion may be a lot, but like my cousin said, don't look at, because life is priceless. So even if you save one life, you cannot even pay one billion for a life. Because for that person whose family, that lost, that family member, one billion is not going to bring him back. Okay? So we're here, you know, you guys work together with the governor. All I ask, you know, you guys, Senator Barnett is my nephew. Okay? Are we related? Yes. Are we, you know, are we on nine? No, we're not. But it doesn't matter. Senators, I grew up, I'm 65. I grew up old school. When you have something, when there's any undertaking, the manoples, when they're consulted with, they say, "Work together, okay? Just do what's right." And tomorrow, if I'm not tomorrow, then take you off tomorrow. Guys, you guys are tomorrow's. My friend here says tomorrow's and dream big. I don't, I see a white tomorrow there. But Senator, guys, you guys, regardless of your ethnicity, work together, please, and put the money into good place so that we can think, not for the now, not for the present, not for the short-term future, but rather for the future, like you said, Senator. For sure. It's not for our kids, not for ourselves in 30 years when we're gone. I might be gone before I get home. But we've got to think forward, more farther ahead. And like you said, you know, when I testified, I wanted to testify as a southern resident, and more so because when I had experience, now I'm trying to see if we can work with the administration to bring more ambulance. Because I disagree that they took the ambulance in the southern part. Emergency responses, it's better to be moving forward than to go this way and then go back. Put the ambulances at the end so you can go forward instead of coming from Tamooning or Pidi and then go to Maleso and then go back up to the hospital. Get enough ambulance if you can. But senators, we're all going to haggle over what point is appropriate, is it good enough? And everybody has their points. It's not, you cannot put all of those things that is on Bill 184 for the medical complex and unless you build up. All you guys in real estate, there's only three words that matter in real estate. I'm not a real estate agent, nor am I broker, but it's location, location, location. When it comes to hospital service, location matters as well. Baragada Mangino is central, or just moving from the west to the east. But the time and travel distance are probably almost the same, similar, because depending on the time that you're transported. My friend here again mentioned that we have emergency medical technicians, we have advanced life support. So when you're bringing your, your patient towards the hospital, they will meet you en route to ensure that you're stabilized and proper medical... and proper medical procedures are followed to try to save your life until you get to the hospital. When you get there, there are attending physicians who attend to you while your primary or the specialist get there to do further testing and treatment. But also you get a foot doctor to tend to a heart condition. But at least you guys have basic life-saving skills. And they drive the ambulance. Then they're met by the, you know, the advanced life support. My colleagues, they, they're not here, the exception of Mayor Luis. But Mayor Tony is leaving tomorrow, I believe. So he asked me to come here. But he's, now he asked me, "Can you testify there?" And I, yeah, he's not here. But guys, we've got to start somewhere and somehow. And don't look at the money. Look at the how. We can save money because those entities are out there renting and leasing private properties. Those making those property owners, you know, lamb that, hey, man, I just built this so that the government can pay for it. Why, Speaker, you mentioned that, why pay? It's ours in the future. It doesn't make sense that the government is going to lease government land. But that's how the law is structured. It's structured that the ancestral land commission will charge rent and deeds or whatever so they can pay the ancestral lands. But the land that's going to be built upon is not ancestral land, according to my understanding. It is crown land, ceded by the Spanish government when it was signed the Treaty of Paris in 1898 between the United States. So they ceded the territory of Guam to the United States. And the United States in turn returned the lands to Governor Guam. Some lands were returned. You've got some lands up at Tezen. Look at the dilapidated state it is in. Because the families that the lands were returned to don't have the money to improve upon them. You know, to make renovations and repairs. But the ancestral land commission, Department of Land Management, they, Benny Sneaker testified, all of these guys testified before you guys. And they said the appropriate place is to put it there. They say Adacar, so Odaaga. That's Odaaga, of course. If it's black, don't say Odaaga because black is black. But Agaga is red. So you're guaranteed whether it's Adacar or Odaaga. But in the name places, there must be a reason why it was named that particular way. But guys, let's not look at how much money we're going to spend and let's see if we can, have you guys work together with the governor. Okay? Senator Fisher, you said it's the authority of the administration to make these decisions. Well, you have lawyers. He's got a lawyer. You guys, you know, if that's the governor's territory or it's the governor's name, why are you in it? Move away or you get hit from behind or strike from the side. But work together, guys, so that we can look and provide for what we need, not for the now. Well, not for the now, when I say the now is the present. When I say then is the future. But don't look short term. Look for the further term, the longer future. Like you said, Senator Fisher, it's not for us, but our children and grandchildren. What we leave, the foundation we lay today, the benefits will be reaped by the future generations. Let's not commit ourselves to just, you know, supporting the doctors because they have invested, they have vested interests. And if that's the case, the American Medical Center, I believe, in Manilao should move over to Tumuning. But man, I'll tell you what, they should be elated when they move the hospital over there because they don't have to travel far to GMA as well. But who do we listen to? Let's listen to each other, work together. And I ask you guys, please, I implore you guys, like my cousin said, you gave your commitment to work for the people. Hear the people's pleas. And like you said, you know, the doctors, I applaud them. But, you know, I watched the movie, First Do No Harm. Man, I don't care whether you can pay or not. If you need help, they have to do some life-saving techniques to save your life. The money, you cannot, you cannot milk blood from a turd, sir. You can sue me or you want to get a million dollars judgment against me, but I can't pay you not even a penny because I don't have money to give you. But first do no harm. Let's do something that's going to benefit the entire community, not just a select few or select interest group. You know, others come here with prepared statements. I'd rather speak because when I speak, I speak from my heart and I speak from my mind. That's why I didn't finish college because I hate writing. But you know what? Writing just came from your mind as well. You're just organizing your thoughts in paper, on paper. But senators, work together. Senator Fisher, you used to live in my village when I first got in. I told you, my guys and I were going to embark and ask your permission to cut the rubber tree in front of your house. I don't know if you call that. I says, "Tom," at the time, "Tom, my guys and I are going to cut the protrusion that stick out onto the road, providing a road hazard and safety for big trucks and buses." And I said, "Mayor, that's a big undertaking." And I told you the same thing. We've got to start somehow, somewhere and sometime. This is the same thing as this predicament, sir. Work together. And if the governor, it's already a vision. I don't want to see the mentality that if it's not, you know, the concept is nothing more than an idea, a plan. But from, you know, conception, okay, to fertilization, to actually birth. You guys work together for the benefit of everybody. But in the south, you know, when you put in the center, that means Jigual has to travel just as much as Malazo does. The ones closer are going to save travel time. But work together, senators. And make this, you know, the business, if it's not my idea, it's not a good idea. I understand that these guys come here. I don't know what their interests are, whether protected vested interests they have because they built a building or their lease is not up yet. So there's a prediction that it won't happen within 10. So be it. But you're not going to break the hospital down so you can build a new one. You wait until you build a new one and then you decide what is the destiny of that hospital, whether you want to restore it and bring it back so you can use it for other government entities. But senators, all of this, you're going to have redundancy in testimonies. Things that are being repeated. I read that's a win-win, Senator, Ms. Speaker on the post. That it's a win-win that when you lease, it's ours already, you know? But it doesn't make sense that the government is going to, or at least the layman who don't understand, that you're going to rent your own land from yourself. No, but that is how the law is structured, that the ancestral land will charge, lease or whatever and they need to do so that they can compensate the ancestral landowners that were unjustly, you know, lands were unjustly taken. Man, when we were liberated by the Americas, we were so happy. Now the Crocs were wealth and materialistic things are the Crocs. Now we have to fight each other for what's good for everybody. No. Senator Burnett, you used to call me, you used to go Uncle Jampotan Uncle. I remind you. Boy, I'm your uncle as well. Because your grandmother, Tenggenma Flores, is Chargalov Flores. Her Chargalov is hiding mines up there in the banner. Jampot, Uncle Jampot doesn't have Chargalov whatsoever. But we're related nonetheless, guys. Tomorrow, Chris. I don't see old Charmos up there. But listen, you know, anybody can dream big, irregardless of your ethnicity and irregardless of your profession. You know, you aspire to do something good. Do it for the benefit of all. And that's all I ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Chargalov. Mayor Rivera.
Good afternoon, Speaker and senators. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to give testimony. I am Louise Rivera, mayor of Tumuning Tumanan Harmon. And together with my vice mayor, Albert Tovis, who is also a Navy veteran, we have this, our testimony today in support of Bill 185-37. It does take minutes. Minutes matter when it comes to saving lives and building at Tumuning. Relation can reach the hospital. That means more lives will be saved. We have built two hospitals, countless clinics and related facilities to support our island's medical needs. Why start all over somewhere else? Tumuning is our island's medical city and building the new hospital here makes sense because we will be building adjacent to our island's existing medical infrastructure. You know, I also want to thank a lot of people that were here earlier in the panel earlier, our my educators that were here and then also people from the hospital that I used to work with, people that have saved my lives, including doctors, my colleague. I'd like to acknowledge everybody for caring and I love you all. I know this is all a political thing. I think sitting in my position as mayor and a lot of times having to judge, even contest, things like that, it's the hardest decision, you know? Making these hard decisions is like one of the hardest things I have to do with my job. But I'm here today because of, you know, all this talk and I've been here to many different hearings, listening, but I have remained quiet. I'm listening and ready to answer any questions you may have for me. Even with the different department and agencies that are here, you know, I love working with them. You know, it's all for the good of our people, our island. I don't have any kids of my own. I am just a daughter of Guam and love to be able to help. And I really appreciate the doctors and the hospital personnel that have saved my life because I have gone through a lot as a patient and have endured many different things in my medical life, my medical issues. I have been to many hospitals all over the states and St. Luke's. My last one was in Taiwan and I'm very grateful because now I'm just doing the follow-ups and I'm very happy to have the health and energy that I have today to be able to come before all of you. I want you to know that, you know, even when it comes to party lines, once we take the oath of office that drops, we're here for everybody. And there's so many people today that need medical attention. You know, with, with everything that's going on. So I'm sorry, I'm going to continue in my letter and move on because of all the things that we've been listening to. I love my governor. She's originally, I mean, her house is in Tumuning. She's only in the Ganya Heights for a little bit. I don't want to go against anybody, but I want, I need us to work together. You know, from what we're hearing with all the testimonies and the reports that have come out, we will save money because putting up, putting in upgrades to utilities at Ipau Point will be much less than installing new major infrastructure to the other proposed sites. If we need to expand, we can use the property, the existing Guam Memorial Hospital, where it sits on right now. We don't need anything really fancy. We just need a new hospital for our people and we need it now. People are suffering and dying now. The horror stories of hospital staff, doctors and patients are clear calls for immediate help. What good is a fancy medical complex years from now when lives could be saved and sufferings can be alleviated with action taken now? The purpose of a hospital is to save lives. Once that basic purpose is fulfilled, expansion may be considered, but not until then. We pray our leaders can work together and meet our urgent healthcare needs as quickly as we can. We believe we can do that by building at Tumuning now. Thank you for allowing me to provide this testimony for myself, Louise Rivera, and my vice mayor, Albert Tovis. Sidos Massey.
Sidos Massey, Mayor Rivera. Dr. Thorpe, SDA. I'm sorry, sorry. My apologies. Dr. Shea.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker Talahe, fellow senators. My name is Dr. Thomas Shea. I'm a board-certified OB-GYN. I arrived in Guam with the United States Navy. I'm a veteran and now I'm going on 27-plus years. So when I look around this room, I think I probably have the most experience about healthcare in this entire room regarding hospitals, clinics and the delivery of healthcare. So one question that was asked prior was that, you know, we're not experts, but this is a healthcare bill, really. We really, I mean, we're talking about a hospital, but we're really talking about the healthcare system. We're talking about access to care. We're talking about life-saving care. So there's no arguments. I don't think among the senators that you want to do the right thing. And I'm here to help you. I rise above all these controversies to help. And I'm here for the people of Guam. And I've always said it, 27 years. What is the, people ask me, "Why are you in Guam for so many years?" You know, it's because the babies I delivered. And I delivered 11,000-plus babies and I love what I do. I really do. When I hold the life in my hands, that, that's truly a miracle of life. And the lives I save of women that's bleeding, it is those women and the babies I deliver, those are the voices that I represent today. So I fully support Bill 185-37. Can we have the first slide, please? Now, while the slide is going up, before I forget, I want to address some of the concerns of the Southern residents and before I forget some of the solution that I wrote down while I was listening. And I've been to the Southern Health Center and I have some solution that I want to kind of really put out there really quick in less than a minute to help the resident in the Southern villages. And one of them is the ambulance. And I agree, we need to station more ambulances down south, in remote areas. Those are key to saving lives. So we need to look into that. And I think that's easily done if we put your mind to it. The second thing that I think can help the Southern residents is open a 24/7 urgent care center, perhaps. Something not big, small, staffed by one physician, two nurses. Something that's for the village there that can just go to their center. 24/7, an urgent care center. Public health can do it. There's a beautiful public health center there. And I've been to the public health and I can help them. If they need help, call me, I'll help them. You don't have to pay me. So in the future down the road, if the Southern Health Care Center opens up, perhaps you can open an urgent care center on top of a surgery center, on top of a small overnight admission center in Southern, the Southern villages. So those are some of the idea that came to me when I was sitting there, listening to the, the southern residents. So I appreciate it, it's beautiful villages down there, hopefully I can get to visit them again. So first slide. Now, I'm here in support of Bill, uh, you know, next slide, sorry, that was my introduction there. I wanna start with this slide because it is important. Because, you know, public health director last week referenced the matrix study. So we can't just ignore it, we heard people saying, you know, the study doesn't take into consideration this, that, let's throw it away. But we can't just ignore and forget about it. So, so to recall what the public health director's own testimony. And I'm glad he clarified some important points. Which during the parade of out-of-loop presentations, many people thought they were gonna build a central public health clinic. A clinic to see patients next to the hospital. But when Arsene Augustine clarified, it wasn't a clinic next to the hospital. So people, even at GMH, when I attended the, the information hearing. They were telling people that, oh, we're gonna build a public health clinic right there next to the hospital, so when you get discharged, you go to the clinic and follow up. Well, that's just not true and I, I'm glad the uh public health director actually clarified that. That it's actually gonna be administrative offices. Next to the hospital. Next slide. Now, when you look at this matrix and. I wanna thank. Public health director because he pointed it out, this part. And when you really read about it, you know, he mentioned that he was not gonna build another healthcare center because there's one down north, one down south. There was not gonna build one in the central located area. But when you read it in this matrix area, it says centrally located clinic is printed on there and it says overdue. Now, that's a conflict of information. But when you read in more detail, you talked about the different administrative offices that's in there, so. Which again, the administrative office for public health does not need to be next to the hospital. And the reason why that's the case, the evidence was, will tell us. That a hospital is open twenty-four-seven. Holidays are open, no matter what. Administrative office, even clinics, public health clinics are closed during holidays and weekends. And limited hours during the weekdays and evenings, so it doesn't complement the hospital. And for this very reason is why island, islands like us, Hawaii is probably the closest. Even they don't have. Public health clinics next to the hospital, not even administrative offices next to the hospital. So if they wanna build an administrative office, they can build it, it's okay. I encourage them to build it. Centralize it, great, but it does not need to be part of the complex per se. Next slide. Now, when you talk about the medical complex and I'm, I'm again, I'm showing the evidence base because this is the government Guam study. The medical complex in the plan was called to have a CDC lab, VA clinic, behavioral health. But then the behavioral health is already expanding, pharmacy really is within the hospital setting, inside the hospital. And there are many pharmacies all over the island, so what's left, right? The twenty-first century complex, the law that you pass has already been dissolved. A hospital is really what we really need. So let's talk about why Epa is the best location. Next slide. Now, again, I'm talking about evidence-based data. We have to talk about evidence-based data because you're putting a billion dollars into something, so you have to. Can't just throw away a study that a government in Guam spent nearly two million dollars. You know, I said six million, but I think the contract is open up to six million. So once this. Site is done, I think they're gonna open that contract all with six million, but I think they paid about one point six, at least that's what I read. But again, let the evidence show that Epa is the best site. Next slide. This was the. Epa. Site, Adakau and Eagles Field, these were the three top sites that. The matrix study. Showed us. Now, we can argue whether or not the study wasn't weighted, the point was. You know, I, my memories are pretty good, Epa was thirty-four. Adakau was thirty, Eagles Field was thirty-eight. You know, a win is a win by one point or two points, it doesn't matter. You know, Epa point still rise above the rest. So I would. Argue that the evidence tells us, Epa point is the best site. Next slide. Now, you probably can't read this on, on the monitor, but when you look at. Uh, the, the evidence, right? The evidence was based on key factors, it wasn't just something that's drawn out of the blue or out of a, you know, a bucket. We know the site out of one is beyond Eagles Field, between or short of Adakau. So what is, uh, it's pretty much around the same area, so when you talk about infrastructure, everything, you still gotta base it on this particular evidence-based study. Now. Epa still comes out to be number one based on the critical factors that's listed here, which is location, population density, travel distance. Emergency response time and the distance from clinic, that was part of the, the, the government. Authorized study that we pay millions of dollars for. Next slide. Now, this particular slide is important. Um, the evidence really tells us on this slide is that the drive time analysis, Epa is the best. And it says it right there, access and emergency response doubling the population access within ten minutes compared. To a site that's way out in Adakau Eagles Field. Next slide. To understand response time. I don't know if this picture. Will actually do justice to, to try to show you what this particular case was about. But I can tell you that I remembered this very specifically. The person behind this picture in a green there is Dr. Ray Lim, who was just sitting right here. It was an emergency C-section. I was called, the baby's heart rate was going down, mom was bleeding. And was a normal pregnancy, but. Anything can happen when you're pregnant. And this is why obstetric is such a high-risk profession. So I was running, I mean, I was. Pretty much like six, seven minutes away from the hospital. And I was speeding down the road and if I had a cop that was chasing after me, I wouldn't stop. I would still keep going and they can arrest me if they want, but this is what I was after. And I got there, I called a C-section, Dr. Rin responded within ten minutes. We intubated the patient, we delivered the baby, resuscitated the baby. Baby did just fine, mom was bleeding, we had to do emergency surgery, if not, she would have died. So this baby would have been without the mom, but the mom survived. And the reason she survived is because I was close by and Dr. Lim anesthesia was close by. Without anesthesiologist there, I would not have been able to do the C-section, no way. So I wanna thank Dr. Lim and the rest of the anesthesia department that they came out cohesively and supported Bill one eighty-five. But it's these, these are the real lives that we touch, that, that, that we really wanna save. It's not about special interests of doctors, our clinics, we get accused of that all the time. And I don't know why people talk so bad about doctors like that, we really shouldn't. If any one of us here, any one of you have a heart attack, me and Dr. Thorpe here would do CPR and we'd do our best to save your life. If, if you had a spontaneous pneumothorax, I would probably take out this pen and know exactly where to stick this pen. Into your ribs to relieve you of the pneumothorax and save your life. So we are the experts. And what we're talking about is saving lives, that's basically what this Bill one eighty-five is about. And Epa Point is the best place and if it's not Epa, somewhere in Tumuning, it's okay. But I know the draft was rough draft, you can amend it, but I would still prefer. To look at Epa because it's government land. Next slide. Now, this particular slide, again, is evidence-based, I didn't make this up, this is something that the government authorized. Tumuning is the best location, if you look at the density of populations. All the green areas, the density, dark green areas is where the most population of, of, you know, Guam have access to. Now, if you really look at this, within twenty minutes, within twenty minutes, over a hundred and six thousand people of Guam have access to Epa Point. Over a hundred and six thousand people of Guam. They're not talking about doctors, they're talking about patients having access. Indicating that our evidence shows that Epa Point, Tumuning is the best location. Next slide. This next particular slide is also very important and again, is evidence-based. It's something that really need to pay attention to and I think the mayor and the senator had brought it up before. The financial viability, the evidence tells us. That Epa will save us not just tens of millions, but hundreds of millions of dollars in water infrastructure. Waste water costs, power infrastructure costs, road expansion, telecommunications costs. The evidence shows conservatively that over one hundred million dollars can be saved. Compared to just twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars at Epa Point. Plus, the evidence also showed us. I don't have that slide here, but in my previous testimony, that DPW power wastewater would take over three years to create. Up in Manila. But it's faster Epa because the infrastructure is already in place. Next slide. This next slide is important. Because this is where the medical complex is. When we talk about the medical complex, you wanna build a medical complex, why? Why waste the money when it is already built? This is where the frustration of many of us providers is, is scratching our head. We're not. The enemies, we, we, we wanna save your life, this is why, why we stay on Guam. And. Here's a short list, this is a slide that I think will, will really convince people that medical complex is already built. Guam Radiology Center is there, Medical Plaza is there, Oka Plaza. MPG, TDC, American Medical Clinic, Urology, there's two cancer centers located right here. FHP Clinic, who houses many doctors, SDA Clinic. Who is one of the largest clinics on Guam is right one minute from Epa. Diagnostic Lab is there, MDX, Physical Therapy Clinic, Guam Medical Care, Dr. Underwood's OB-GYN Clinic, Dr. Doris Lim Intermedicine Clinic, Dr. Malaloto Pediatrics. Dr. Blankeford Pediatrics, Dr. Domalanta Pediatrics. Guam Surgery Center is there and Guam Surgery Ten Center is one of the. Best centers that's ever built on Guam because we do outpatient surgery, we help relieve the stress of GMH from surgeon, surgeries. Half of the clinic is there, right across Hilton. Dr. Usabio's Clinic and Surgery Center is there, MedFirst Pediatrics is there. Dr. Seidel's Clinic is there, he's another OB-GYN. Dr. Landstrom's Hand Clinic is there, Dr. Chen Interne Medicine Clinic is there. Total Clinic, they just opened up a new clinic, Total Foundation, congratulations, they're right there in Tumuning. Orophilus Orthopedic Clinic is there, Dr. Benedicus. Dr. Castro's ENT Clinic, Dr. Carl's Neurology Clinic. Doc, Dr. Fenton's Urology Clinic, Dr. Inaba's Cardiology Clinic, Dr. Yang's Dermatology Clinic. Dr. Lin Sungin's Pediatric Clinic, Dr. Kobayashi Surgery Clinic, Dr. Michael Cruz Surgery Clinic is in Tumuning. Dr. Lum's Express Care, Dr. Lombard's Clinic, Dr. McGallas Infectious Disease Clinic. Dr. Rubio's Endocrinology Clinic, Dr. Malaloto. Dr. Niame, he's a neurosurgeon who just opened up a clinic right next to GMH in Tumuning. Dr. Richardson's Massive Facial Surgery Clinic, Dr. Park's Clinic in the Guam Medical Plaza. Dr. Wong Kiro's Cardiology comes in from Good Samaritan Hospital, he's in Tumuning. Dr. Safa has Dialysis Clinics there, Dr. Patrick Santos, Dr. Villa Intermedicine, IHP is close by, Dr. Prince, Dr. Damien. Podiatry Clinic, you have multiple clinical site clinics. Multiple pharmacies, Guam hearing, I can go on and on and on. And Gita, at the information hearing, even Gita has noticed that. The medical complex is already built in Tumuning and it cannot be replaced. Guam Economic Development Authority or Agency has told us. Over the last four decades, your medical complex had developed. So beautifully in this particular area. That cannot be replaced. Now, if you go back to this slide, I want to. Choose, put your attention to the. Hospital site. It says hospital best at Epa Point, to the right of that arrow is where Guam's industry of tourism is. Now, if we take a moment, we can all agree tourism is probably our number one industry on Guam. Now, with the hospital built there, we can also serve the tourists that comes in. In addition to the hundred and six thousand population that can reach there in twenty minutes. Based on the evidence that we showed. That would really encourage visitors from off-island to come to Guam and knowing that the brand-new hospital is sitting right there, minutes away, minutes away. So the evidence shows that the twenty-first century medical complex is already built and there it is, near Epa. Next slide. Now. When the hospital is building Epa, what are you gonna do with the Guam Memorial Hospital? Land, the building, et cetera. I have some ideas, you know, Epa is big. And I, I can, I have another slide showing how big it really is. Epa is big because it's, it's really over twenty-five, twenty-seven acres. But if you ask, it's not big enough, you know, because they wanna add administrative offices, they wanna. You know, add more space to, you know, for public health, then GMH is another property that you can perfectly get used and it's right there. It's like right down the corridor, just less than thirty seconds or a minute away from Epa, it's perfect. Infrastructure is already there, power is already there, water is already there. You don't have to spend over a hundred million dollars to use that site for your complex if you really want it. Next slide. Now, this is a slide just to give you a visual idea. And I, I kinda looked at it and I think it was also the matrix study too, or one of the slides. To the left is Guam Memorial Hospital in the yellow, I kinda drew it there, you can take a look. Epa Point is there. They said that Guam Memorial Hospital is sitting on a seventeen-acre lot. I don't know how much that is usable, but you know, BSM may would take seventeen acres. And let's just say, you know, twenty-seven acres at Epa Point, that's usable lot. Seventeen, let's do the math, seventeen plus twenty-seven acres, you got forty-four acres of land. Forty-four acres of land that has infrastructure there. You got it, that can be built upon as soon as possible. The argument about fault lines and earthquakes, that, that really doesn't hold much because if you look at Stanford, San Francisco. You know, area, that's all in an earthquake zone and you, you're talking about top-notch nationally-ranked hospital that built in earthquake zones. So when, when I hear, I haven't seen a press release, but when I heard a press release about, you know, the bill will be dead upon arrival, you know, that is. I don't like that because that's doesn't, it's not working together, we. You know, people of Guam is, we're, I, we're better than that, we have to. Really work together for, for the people of Guam and not just one-sided, one-way street in my way or the highway. You know, I, so I, I really don't like that press release, I haven't read it, but I just heard about it, you know, just today. But. Work together, that's the key. Next slide. Now. It's interesting because when we talk about saving money, the finances, right? I put this slide black, I was, I put that words there to remind myself what that is, okay? Because a hundred million dollar that you save can really be used to help Guam Power Authority that everybody hates rolling blackouts. You know. I feel bad for the children of Guam because between five to ten o'clock, they can't even do their homeworks, there's no lights. And everything is digital now, they can't even turn on their computers. So I would save the hundreds of millions of dollars and help GPA fix the power grid, fix their generators, they're gonna need it anyway. Even if you build a hospital, they're gonna need to fix that. How long are we gonna tolerate these power outages? Help the people of Guam by not putting all this money in the medical complex, fix the power grid, help GPA. I think we can all agree on that. Next slide. Now, people can argue about this, right? They said Epa is not big enough. Straw Medical Center. Started construction, is built on five acres and that's the building that they're gonna build. Less than five acres. Next slide. This is Queen's Medical Center, Epa is not big enough. Queen's Medical Center have, it's over seven hundred beds. Seven hundred bed, it is the biggest state-run hospital by Queen Emma Endowment. I worked there, I, I was chief resident there. And I walked through that hospital, it's a beautiful hospital, maintained very well, over a hundred years old, still standing. Less than twelve acres. Less than twelve acres. And I'm a faculty of university, medical school, so I teach. Next slide. Epa is not big enough. I keep hearing that. Kapulani Medical Center, that is the brand-new women and children's medical center, that is the children's medical center, brand-new. Their NICU, their room is individualized rooms for the neonatal intensive unit. If you go to GMH, it's like a room of ten, ten feet by twelve feet, they call that a NICU, it's really shame. When I walk through that, I, I really try not to walk through that because it brings tears to your eyes. This is Kapulani Medical Center, it's sitting on less than five acres. So, you know, Epa is not big enough. Anyway. So with all these island hospitals building on your own footprint, right? You don't need, you don't see them. Fumbling or complaining. About. Their building on their same exact footprint and the operation are being disrupted, we hear that all the time. The other option, you can actually rebuild and build on the current Guam Memorial Hospital land. You got what, is it seventeen acres? Seventeen acres, that's bigger than Queens have right now. And Queens didn't, when they expanded, they're gonna expand some more. To another fifty or seventy more beds and you don't hear them complaining about they're gonna interrupt their operations, they can't expand because of that. The evidence tells us that you can, you can if you can work together. I think the governor, the legislature, the doctors, the patients, we need to rise up and work together. There's no can't and there's not a one-way street. There's no can't and there's not a one-way street. Now, next slide. I will talk about this before I get into that. I, I've been to the informational hearing and what I hear, what they're telling people is this. Even to veterans, I'm a veteran, but they can't lie to me because I know healthcare. They tell veterans, they tell patients, if we build this complex, you don't have to leave island. We can take care of you here. That is absolutely not true. I will tell you that is absolutely not true. If somebody tells you, you don't have to leave island because they're going to build it here and that's it. You can get all your care here. No. You will still have to go off island for your healthcare. The experience that I have, even in Honolulu, Hawaii, with all the state of the healthcare hospitals we've built, we still send you off island to the state side for healthcare. We still do. And that is the truth. And that's coming from Honolulu, Hawaii, where we have several Queen's Medical Center, Straub, Capulani Women and Children. We still got to send you off to the mainland to get healthcare. So if somebody tells you, senators, that if you build it, you don't have to leave island, that is not true. You still may have to go to St. Luke's. You may still have to go to Hawaii, mainland, wherever it is. You're still going to have to leave island. Now, you can say, hey, Dr. Shea, you're talking about Hawaii. You're talking about off-island. That's not Guam. Guam's not like that. Well, let's put out this, pretty much almost my last slide here. G R M C is on Guam and G R M C is built on less than 80 acres. So this is Guam. They did it. I say you learn from G R M C, talk to them and be partners with G R M C. And let's all work together. Let's all work together. Next slide. You know, I wasn't going to put this slide up, but FEMA sort of pushed me into putting this slide up because I read in the newspaper and it quoted FEMA referencing Guam Memorial Hospital as a, as a pig. And they didn't want to put lipsticks on the pig. You know, it's a little insulting to many of our nurses and our healthcare providers to be told that we're working in a, in, you know, inside of a pig, but we still save lives. But BSMA, you know, I don't take it personally, but maybe it is a pig. But that pig was raised by Gov Guam. And that's the point of this slide. Is no matter what hospital you build in the future, I may not be here. Who knows how long each of us will live, right? But if you ever build a hospital in Guam, please, 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 consider privatizing the hospital or something else rather than having Gov Guam raise another pig. Okay? Seriously, do that because this pig was maintained by Governor Guam. And over the last six years, it's gotten worse. And I've been there for 27 years. I've seen this hospital. I've worked through the halls for this hospital for 27 years. So next slide, I think I'm about done here. So I want to thank you for allowing me, senators, for, you know, sharing my input. And I certainly hope that our senators take it to heart and realize that E-Paw Point is the right location after I provided the evidence-based, you know, slides. The medical complex really is already built in Tamuning. Bill 185 dash 37 is on target. And we should fully support building a hospital in Tamuning slash E-Paw Point. And I will commit my time for how many more years I can practice on Guam. I've been there for three decades. I delivered 11,000 of your Guam babies, saved thousands of moms' lives. And I really hope that we can all work together. I wish the governor would stop sending out press releases to antagonize the community, but to bring us together. I think she can and I want to see her succeed. I want to see this 37 legislature bodies succeed. And I know we can. And I can speak for majority of the doctors on Guam who I've talked to at the hospital and outside the clinics. We can succeed if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shea. Dr. Thorpe.
Hafaday and bonus. Thank you, Honorable Speaker Talahi, for the opportunity to speak and Honorable Senators for the opportunity to share with you today. I'm Dr. Jonathan Thorpe, Medical Director of the Guam Seventh Day Adventist Clinic. And I come to you as a quote-unquote missionary doc and citizen for one reason and one purpose only, and that is to advocate for the countless patients whom I see on a daily basis. For context, I am a farm kid from Canada who grew up on a apple and cherry farm, 80 acres in southern British Columbia. I went on to train at Loma Linda University, School of Medicine, and then Johns Hopkins University, where I obtained degrees in internal medicine, medical doctorate and masters in healthcare and hospital administration. I then moved to Nepal and worked in, in, and serving a rural, poor population for four years. I turned down multiple lucrative job opportunities and accepted a role here in Guam for a fraction of what I could earn stateside. My goal and intention are to help the people from the north to the south, from the east to the west. And I agree, GMH has reached the end of its life cycle and a new hospital must be built. The Guam SDA Clinic has had the privilege, and I say this statement with sincerity, to have served this community for 67 years, including as an aside with the management and operations of the original hospital at E-Paw Point. We are the longest-serving clinic on this island and our multi-decade legacy has centered around helping people where and when we could. It is my hope, as recently appointed director, to continue this legacy and to help wherever we can best serve. We want to be part of the discussion and help the community to arrive at a solution. The discussions over the location of the new hospital has been complex and politicized. Frankly, it's good to see engagement around an important issue. I enjoy debates and I enjoy discussions. I think we can all agree that this is, it is healthy to weigh the pros and cons of a question scenario. Due diligence is a must and I'm thankful that you, as senators, are voted into a position of trust to hear the debates and then chart an unbiased path forward for the community. Frankly, I do not envy your job. It is not easy. I really feel for the people of the South. They want and desire better access to care. I agree. More facilities and access to care needs to be built. They need better pre-hospital care. There's no questions asked. It goes without saying that SDA Clinic is located closest to E-Paw Point. And consequently, as I shared in my October 2023 testimony, that I, we support the E-Paw Point as a location of choice with the principal reasons being the shortest lead time to construction, proximity to much of the community, proximity to the established medical services and least, and at least, as reported by the Matrix Study, at the least the cost of construction. That being said, we don't dictate what the community needs. Senators, as you weigh the facts for Bill 185 and Bill 184, I would like to contribute to the discussion location, not by restating and rehashing many facts you've already heard today, rather by asking that you carefully consider five key questions for your consideration. As an internal medicine physician, I look for the root cause of illness. I apply this skillset to the question at hand and I will summarize in the next span on each point. One, besides the physical structure with the hospital beds, what are the true health needs of the community, especially the southern side of the island? Two, does Gov Guam wish to perpetuate a state of sick care? Or could the territory think outside of the proverbial box to invest in non-hospital services that could change the trajectory of the island's health? Three, given the cost of construction and concurrent fiscal limitations, what is the best return on investment? A system that perpetuates a state of sick care or transition to a system of well-care? Do you, as policymakers, wish to eliminate the private and the nonprofit sector and assume the entire continuum of care? And five, from a community master plan perspective, where will the government invest in infrastructure for future growth? From an internal medicines physician's perspective, these five questions are the crux of the issue. And frankly, legislators and governor, I challenge you to look at the immense human suffering present on this island. And as you look, I further challenge you to consider what the best path forward will be for the community. And before I provide commentary on these five points I raised, I would like to, I want to define two important terms, sick care and well-care. Sick care is the American medical system as it stands. It's a system that primarily puts Band-Aids on metabolic conditions, palliates symptoms and intends to keep a patient sick enough that they do not die, but not well enough to truly experience the abundance of life. It is reactive care. Conversely, well-care changes the conversation, recognizes that before the advent of highly-processed foods and sedentary lifestyles, if infectious-related causes of death were eliminated, many people lived decades without medicines. It is proactive care. It is focused on healthy, plant-based nutrition, physical activity, connectedness, avoidance of harmful substances, stress management, sleep. You may have heard of the Blue Zones, regions where people live longer than average. The five Blue Zones are Sardinia, Italy, Okinawa, Japan, Nikoya, Costa Rica, Icaria, Greece, Loma Linda, United States. They share a common lifestyle factors such as plant-based diets, physical activity, fasting and social support. I predominantly care for geriatric population. Most do not want to go to the hospital. In fact, they dread it. Most do not want to take medicines. They fear the side effects and dislike how they make them feel. Most do not want to feel sick. And this brings me to the crux of my point that I'm making today. What are we investing in? The true health needs of the community are affordable access to healthy, plant-predominant foods. The true health needs of a community are systematic approach to public health that focus on wellness, not just preventative services. The true health needs of the community are safe place to exercise. The true health needs of a community are drug rehabilitation and drug abuse control. The true health needs of the community are community-based discussions on our mental, physical, emotional and spiritual health. Now, senators, please forgive my agrarian illustration and key point that I will make next because I grew up on a farm and I think, like many of the farmers of this island, to change the trajectory of health in this island, what if we were to invest millions in a large, multi-acre farm? And on this farm, we use, for example, the tools of climate-controlled vertical farming where high-quality nutrient-rich foods and vegetables are produced in abundance. Or what if the cost of building roads and infrastructure to a new facility went to safe walking paths and exercise areas in our communities? I trust that I made my point. We, the medical community, stand in support of the people of the South in the construction of new facility. Guam needs a new hospital. But with utmost respect to you as respected senators and the Honorable Governor, I say the following with a little trepidation. Both Bill 184 and 185 need to go back to the drawing board. Before millions and/or billions are spent on any facility, neither bill, in my humble professional opinion as a physician, truly changes the trajectory of health in this island. It perpetuates a state of health, a sick care. I challenge you as legislators to fix the root cause of disease while building a new hospital. In closing, it's been our privilege to serve this community for 67 years and we look forward to continuing to serve this island community for years to come. And I respectfully submit this testimony to you and thank you each for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Thorpe. My apologies. I'd like to recognize Senator Roy Canata. Senator, I didn't catch you coming in. All right. If I could ask if there's any questions for the doctors? If not, then thank you very much for your testimony. So Mr. Flores, you will be next. Mr. Amagwin? Mr.? Casper Bauer? Mr. Casper Bauer? Oh, and there was one more. Mr. Torres or Mr. Casper Bauer? All right. If, no testimony? All right. That's fine. Okay, so Mr. Flores, you may go.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is Christopher Camacho Flores and before I present my oral testimony, I have a question for Senator Barnett. Would that be okay?
No, sir. We're here to hear your testimony, please. If we have any questions, we'll ask.
Okay. It'll be during the question and answer period then at the end of my testimony?
You're here to present testimony. We're here to ask questions if we have any because we're the ones who need the testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make some observation on earlier comments, earlier testimony made today. Very, very powerful testimony, both for and against Bill 185. And for the record, I'm against Bill 185 dash 37. And one thing that struck out to me was that, you know, I, I, I respect Ken Longguero. I respect all the speakers whenever they, they have a public testimony. But the one thing that, that, you know, I, I'm not sure of and, and, you know, he throws out these numbers, half a billion dollars to do this, $100 million to this, and same with Dr. Shea. And so, and 10 years to build the hospital, et cetera, et cetera. And I just want to make sure that when they provide this testimony that, you know, it's vetted because, you know, sometimes we do have a tendency to come up here and, and give testimony may not, it may be erroneous. It may not, it may be erroneous. And that's why I don't throw out numbers. I just deal with facts. And I give testimony from previous hearings, what's been written, what's been said, and I don't just throw out numbers. Also, this other thing about, it seems like we're always in this business of comparing Guam with the states, Hawaii, California, Washington. And I think we need to get out of that business because what happens here in Guam and what we do here in Guam is very unique. It's for our island. Dr. Shea mentioned earlier that, you know, they build hospitals in San Fran and Stanford and it's along an earthquake fault. Well, guess what? They have nowhere else to build. Not like us here in Guam. We have land that we can build if we know that there's a fault line somewhere. We can get away from that and build away from that. So, I just don't feel comfortable when we start comparing our island with other places in the world because honestly, I don't really pay attention to what's happening out there in the world. I pay attention to what's happening right here in our island because that's what affects me daily. The one thing that Mr. Benny Siniklas, I believe that's his name, that I mentioned was that, you know, a lot of expert witnesses come before you and they give testimony, the directors, the doctors, whoever the expert subject matter are. And, you know, take heed to the testimony. I'm not a subject matter expert, but I think in the last hearing on November 1st, just like Mr. Siniklas pointed out, I learned a lot myself from just hearing what Mr. Bora had to offer. And the biggest thing I took away from that hearing on November 1st was land use. Mr. Bora's been in this business for a long, long time. And it's very clear that when he talks about land use, we need to really look at that because land use is not just for today or for tomorrow. It's for the future. And so, would I rather build on 102 acres? And let's forget about the noise about the Veterans Hospital and behavioral wealth and healthcare and public health. Let's just forget about that. Let's just focus on the hospital right now because that's what we're here for today, is to build that hospital, whether it's in Tamuning or whether it's Eda Agaga. The main focus right now is to build that hospital. So, if you were to give me an option on land use, and I'm using land use as a requisite, to build on 17 acres versus 102 acres, I mean, it's a no-brainer. I would build on 102 acres, regardless of the price because in the long term, that 102 acres is going to provide returns back to me for that land use. Whereas I build on 16 acres, I'm done. And Dr. Shea, it's good that he says, you know, Hawaii can expand and all that. Again, this is not Hawaii. We're in Guam. We are Chamoros. We're not Hawaiians. Okay? So, we need to look at what our needs are. And our needs right now and what I look at is land use. You know, my father owns 12 and 1/2 acres at Eagles Field that we're never going to see. We're never going to touch. We're never going to walk on. We're never going to plant there, nothing. We've lost that land forever. Okay? And so, if I was given an opportunity to have the governor lease or outright purchase that 102 acres so she can put it into the ancestral lands and make whole, just like we did for the war claims, make whole the landowners that lost their properties forever and compensate them? It may not be at today's prices, but that's okay. The war claims that, there's no way that you're going to tell me 25,000 is the amount that they're going to earn for the suffering that they did during World War II. There's just no way. You can't put a price on it. Just like it was stated earlier by Mayor of Molesu, you cannot put a price on life. And I think I mentioned in the November 1st hearing that you can build this hospital right next to Dr. Shea's house. And as a matter of fact, I kind of took offense to Dr. Ho when he said that if he doesn't respond within 5 to 10 minutes, you're going to die. He said that earlier and I made note of that and I really take offense to that because he's really making it look like he's the savior of all things. Pardon?
I think he was referring to the anesthesiologist.
It was Dr. Ho because Senator Fisher was asking for the expertise because he's an expert in that if he doesn't respond within 5 to 10 minutes, you're going to die. Last thing that I just want to talk about and then I'll get into my testimony is Mayor of Tamuning, of course, if you're the mayor of that city, you're going to support this bill. I have no problem with that. If the mayor of Mangilo, if that hospital was in Mangilo, he's going to support that bill also as well. So, it's a no-brainer where she's coming from. But the thing is, again, go back to the land use. Dr. Shea talked about 106,000 people it's going to serve right there in Epa Point. Again, he didn't say, mention anything about the totality of the population on Guam. There was earlier testimony that was mentioned that, you know, hey, the governor ran on this platform. And let me remind you, she made no secret of it. She ran on this platform on her reelection that she's going to build that hospital in the central part of Guam. She made no bones about it. It was no secret. And guess what? She won by a landslide. So, what does that tell me as a voter? Because I voted for her because I liked that idea. We have a hospital at G R M C in the northern part of Guam already. We have the Naval Hospital in the central west part of the island. Why not have a hospital in the central east part of the island? So, it'd be like a triangle. And she made no bones about making that her platform for her reelection. And guess what? She was re-elected by a landslide, by a landslide, not by a margin. So, the people agreed with her, had to. And I know her opponent was, you know, he was a staunch opponent, but she was re-elected by a landslide, running on that premise that she was going to build that hospital in the central part of Guam for all of Guam. Para todo y tauta. So, you know, when testimony is given, you know, let's listen to the experts. Let's listen to the directors. They've done their due diligence, I believe. So, with that, I just want to, a few things I just want to mention. I oppose Bill 185-37 for the simple reason, this legislative body is again wanting or attempting to govern the people of Guam by introducing this frivolous bill which may be unconstitutional in where, in whole or in part, and may be in violation of their Guam Organic Act segregation of powers. We have seen this type of legislation not too long ago when it was proposed from this legislative body, again wanting or attempting to govern the health emergency powers of the executive branch of government. Using a phrase, and I am paraphrasing him, I have heard a senator mention before where a certain report wasn't even worth the paper it was written on. Well, I say to the same senator, this Bill 185-37 is not even close to being worthy to be written on paper. My understanding as one of the most important and critical duty as a senator is to remain impartial and have an open mind during any public hearings and after gathering all the facts from government agencies and public testimony, makes a decision to either vote in favor of the bill or not. By you, Senator Barnett, introducing this bill dictating which village the hospital should be built, have lost your impartiality and open-mindedness to entertain Bill 184-37 which has not even been voted on or acted upon. Again, this is a blatant attack on the executive branch of our government in tying its hands to properly govern the island. The last time I checked, this legislative body has two major functions and no more, no less. The first, it is the law-making body and controls the purse strings, no, to describe it bluntly as the legislative branch of our government. It is not a governing body. Period. It may conduct oversight hearings as you have done many times, but that is nowhere close to even becoming a governing body. The governing is all-inclusive and reserved for the executive branch of our government. Two branches of our government cannot govern the people of Guam. Two branches of our government cannot govern the people of Guam. There will be turmoil and dissent as we have seen happening today. And it's so sad because the people of Guam deserve better leadership from this body in front of me this afternoon. Here are some examples of how Governor Lou Longguerrero and Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenorio have successfully governed our island and the people of Guam. First, they came up with a very creative, thinking-out-of-the-box mentality in trying to pay the war claims recipients as expeditiously as possible. They were informed by a former congressman, her process won't work and that it will further delay or may even hamper the federal process in making the payments. The governor even invited this former congressman to a meeting in Adalup where she reiterated that she was moving forward with her idea and that she believes, she believes the federal government will be able to reimburse Gulf Guam paying out the war claims right here on our island. And lo and behold, like manna from heaven, the war claims recipients were paid faster and more survivors were able to enjoy whatever amount of money they received, including my father, Henry Tenorio Flores, who is 93 years old. Second, Governor Longguerrero was able to get the EITC funded by the Federal Treasury after many decades of paying EITC from our general funds. Thirdly, Governor Lou Longguerrero was able to increase the Medicaid cap from 18 million to 126 million. Imagine that. Medicare cap, Medicaid cap from 18 million to 126 million. Let that sink in for a little bit. Lastly, the Longguerr Tenorio team is paying tax refunds within three weeks versus months previously under the previous administration. Now, let's look at how this body has been attempting or wanting to govern this island. First, we have Bill 184, I mean, 185-37, and it states that it will be built in Tamuning. So, this body has been always after the executive branch on transparency and being forthright with information. So, this bill is very flawed. It doesn't tell me where in Tamuning, what's the size in Tamuning, nothing. What's the cost? Nothing. It just says it has to be built in Tamuning. So, it's very not, it's untransparency and it just doesn't cut the mustard in what you have set in standard for the executive branch. But I guess the standard doesn't apply to this body. My father, Henry Tenorio Flores, along with his sister Margaret, original landowners of Eagles Field, along with other landowners who are my relatives, were meeting with the governor to find a solution in returning our lands held by the Navy. The governor made it very clear to the landowners, the land will revert back to the federal government if Gulf Guam does not lease it. End of story. Made that very clear to us, all of us. If she was able to lease it, however, she gave us three options. She didn't promise anything. She gave us three options. Either land exchange, monetary compensation, or those who want to continue the fight to get their lands back, they may do so. It was crystal clear to me as I advised my father that we will never get his land back and better to opt for either land exchange or monetary compensation. The 36th Guam Legislative Body under the leadership of Speaker Chalai also had meetings with the landowners and offered nothing but false hope during an election year using the landowners as pawns to further a reelection bid and promising us that she will work tirelessly on her behalf to get our lands back. I even held her accountable to this task which she responded, and I'm paraphrasing, and we can go back to the tape, "I will do everything within my power, Mr. Flores, but I can't do it alone." She never once met with Admiral Nicholson nor a resolution to the congressman nor anything. She did nothing, period. If she did anything, and I am giving her the benefit of the doubt, I am not aware to this date because she has never informed me of any such doing on her behalf for the landowners. There were only three parties involved in the Eagles Field negotiations, the governor, Admiral Nicholson, and the 36th Guam Legislature under Speaker Chalai's leadership. Speaker Chalai made statements that the legislature did not kill the Eagles Field lease and was not responsible for doing such thing. As far as I was aware, the governor didn't kill it. Admiral Nicholson didn't kill it. And so, who's left holding the bag? As a landowner, I attended all the governor's meetings and Speaker Chalai's public hearings on Eagles Field. So, I am fully above board as to what transpired. The bottom line is that we were given false hopes and no support whatsoever in getting our lands back. This is the truth as I knew it then and now today. Let's talk about pipe dreams and big dreams and let's not dream big. You know, if they build it, they'll come. Guess what? Those medical clinics were never there in Tamuning until that hospital was built. That's a fact. And I was, I'm glad Mr. Bora mentioned that because, again, that's where you get that knowledge from, years of experience and years of being on, working for Gulf Guam. If you build that hospital in Mangilo, the property values are going to rise. People are going to be buying property out there. Businesses will be buying property. If the Army builds the missile defense site at Eagles Field, which I would have preferred, when I pass by there, I can tell my grandkids, that's Tata's land, but look at, that's a nice hospital we have there. Now, when we pass by there, I said, oh, there's an Army missile defense site there that's built on Tata's land and we can't even walk on it. Let's talk about pipe dreams and dreaming big. You know, Governor Camacho had a big dream. He had a big dream of building a state-of-the-art museum for the island. That was a huge dream. State-of-the-art museum to finally house all our heritage, culture, artifacts, our story as Chamoros. He wanted it built at Fort Apugan so it will overlook the capital city of our island, and it would be a shining light up there on that hill. Well, Governor Cavu thought otherwise and had it built at Skinner Plaza. Big mistake, big mistake. And I'm pretty sure you guys know what I'm talking about because you've been there at the museum. It's in a deplorable state right now, and it's only seven years in its infancy. Did this body stop or interfere with that construction from happening? The museum was built in Russia. It could open in time for the Festival of the Pacific Arts, in which Guam was hosting in 2016. There were a lot of cost overruns building that museum. I know because I was part of that administration till I got kicked out. And that's okay, I have no problem with that. The museum is in dire need of major repairs and has only been seven years in its infancy. Other statements presented before this body were like this: "It's a pipe dream, too big of a dream to build a medical complex. If you build it, they will come," and so forth. Pipe dreams and dreaming too big. Are we not allowed to dream big like Governor Camacho when he undertook his vision of building a state-of-the-art Guam museum? I don't think any of you senators sitting up there, or any parent for that matter, will tell your kids when they were growing up, "Don't dream big." "Oh, no, don't dream." Because I didn't do that with my kids. I have three boys, and they're all successful. Listen to the subject matter experts who have testified before this body, like Mr. Joe Bora, who has a wealth of expertise and knowledge. Again, one of the things he pointed out was land use, very important. Very important. We're going to be building on seventeen acres and be stuck with what we have, or build on a hundred and two and we can expand. You're going to make that decision. You always should, you always should plan for land use and how you can continue to profit or expand on your land use because Guam is not going to grow any more land. That's the bottom line. This is all we have. Also, the notion of build it and they will come. Well, they came all right. You know, the other thing that I remember during the Camacho administration was we were talking about building a convention center. And Senator Duñez, I'm pretty sure you remembered that. I don't know if you did or not, but we needed a convention center so we can start hosting. You know, we hosted the Asian Pacific Islands Leadership every so often at Adalup, and it was held up at the governor's hall, which is up there behind Adalup, where the Lottie of Freedom is. It was called Governor's Hall of Governors at the time. But it was too small because you invite all the Pacific Island nations in our area, and it was just too small. So we were talking about building a convention center here in Guam so we can attract more business to do their, host their conventions here on Guam. That never came to fruition. That was a big dream. I wish we could have a convention center like they do in Hawaii because our convention center right now is, let's face it, it's Cavu Field House. If you really want to look at it, that's our convention center, it's Cavu Field House. G R M C Hospital is located in the north, like I said earlier. Naval Hospital is located approximately in the west-central area. And if we build the new hospital at Edagaga, we will have a hospital approximately in the east-central part of our island, forming almost a perfect triangle where immediate care can be provided, given your locations. We've talked about also, and it was testified, that, you know, Dr. Shea, I have all the respect for him as well. I'm glad he's a veteran. I know he's not a drunk veteran because I wrote a note to him. I said, "By the way, are you a drunk vet?" And he said, "I don't drink." And my response was, "I don't sometimes." But anyway. In closing, I hope this body quits the business of wanting or attempting to govern the people of Guam and leave that to the executive branch of our government. But in the meantime, as one of your colleagues repeatedly stated, I hope that you as policymakers take care of enacting laws that we can enforce and support and taking care of the government's purse. Thank you and may God bless our island, our governor, and for you senators. This concludes my testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. Mr. Amakwen?
Half day, half day, my former public servant colleagues. My name is Stefan Amagin from Deredel. I would like to thank all of you: Senator Fisher, Senator Duñez, Senator Jesse Luan. Senator Jesse Luan, thank you for the great hospitality that your best half has given us when I was in Iluilo. Gimbal is indeed a beautiful town. Guam should take heed and find out exactly how they protect their shorelines. Those jackstones, those jackstones, those dead jackstones are well-made, and it is indeed the town of the rising sun. Not because I'm a sunshine supporter, but but the only reason why I came here. Okay, first, I just submitted written testimony, and I saw a lot of my fellow veterans. I'm not speaking for other veterans, I'm speaking for myself. Right? Before anything else I start, okay, I'm a veteran of United States Marine Corps for four years. I deployed twice, one in Middle East and one here in Western Pacific, that were in standby to respond to any calls at any time. I served two years with the Army Reserve, and I served eighteen years with the Guam Air National Guard, whereby I deployed to Afghanistan twice, back-to-back in 2011, 2012. I did a lot of military missions in Cambodia, Philippines, Yolanda to Big Sag, and other places. I am a, I was a certified electrician, but due to the fact that I have not practiced my field, I don't consider myself a certified electrician. I have to be retrained again. But again, I'm not an expert on fault lines, salt spray, and thirty billion ants. I'm still wondering how we're going to be able to count thirty billion ants because I have a lot of ants in my house. I need that to be counted. I want to thank the Federal Veterans Affairs for approving the lease of the community-based outreach clinic, which is Seabok in Deredel area, next to a hospital. Number Seabok was built next to a hospital, Naval Hospital. Naval Hospital, if you look at the side of the cliff there, there's a fault line. I mean, you see a lot of caves, right? Yeah, same situation as Epa Point. But I'm here to support your bill, Senator Chris Burnett, to the fact that I'll tell it down the line. I was not able to actually type my written testimony to the fact that we got hit by power outages this weekend, and I think it damaged one of my printers. So I took the time, my wife's waiting outside. I know she's probably upset because she's waiting outside, but she understands. Because as I retired, serving thirty-one years as a public servant with the Guam Police Department, and twenty-three years with serving Uncle Sam, which I appreciate because he takes care of the veterans. I appreciate all the support that you guys are doing for the people of Guam, trying to come up with a hospital, trying to come up with a better hospital for our people. But again, I want to thank the VA. You know, it was a great news for me. After all the testimony for the veterans, my fellow veterans, that VA, that we need to create our own clinic. I was going to say, leave the taking care of the veterans to the federal side. I'm a, I apply for my benefits. Benefits for the veterans is not automatic. I have to apply for it, sometimes it takes a while, right? If you receive it, you get all kinds of medical help. I mean, they can refer me to the outside help. Like we have some doctors here that cater for the VA. They call it a community provider. That's the other options that they have at Seabok. And Seabok, we have some hard-working employees at Seabok. That's one of the reasons why I also come here to testify because those guys has been working hard to support us. And I believe those employees also support the Section Thirty money, right? Because the federal employees, we get that every year. Section Thirty money that's also tied into a bond. Same thing with business privilege tax. We cannot lower the business privilege tax to the mere fact. Been reading the budget law. I see a lot of bonds that tie into BPT. So I hate to say it, but I think it's going to be hard to roll back the business privilege tax. So I want to thank our elected leaders for all the collaboration you guys are making. Also, I want to thank the former Congressman San Nicolas because he was the one that pushed for the earning income tax credit. The earning income tax credit was being pushed by former Governor Carl Gutierrez, a servant for eight years, and I know how he works. He's a grassroots governor. And I support anybody that Governor Carl Gutierrez supports. That's why I supported this administration for the last two years because he's supporting them. That's my loyalty to Governor Carl. You know, he's a good man, he's a good leader, and he's down to earth. Also, the timely payment of tax refunds. I want the public to know that it's not because of financial, good financial management. It is because five people took the government to court. It went up to Supreme Court, right? Now it's a court-mandated payment for Governor of Guam. If I look at your budget, you guys actually budget that for every fiscal year. So thanks to you all for making sure that we're actually abiding with the court mandate. So it's not about good financial management. We have no choice but because of those five people that took the government to court. Expert plan, right? We said we get with the experts. You know, last night I was so bored, and my internet was down several times because of the power outage. And I was just Googled Guam Memorial Hospital plan. And guess what I ran into? They call it the Guam Memorial Hospital Business Sustainability Plan. I sent several of you guys about that plan. And that plan, it just says expansion. And that plan, they say about parking garages. You know, I don't have time to look through it, but if you guys have time, you guys can share it with the rest of the senators. But I'm not sure why that plan, the Business Sustainability Plan, was not given during the transition time of one administration to another. That was, I think, done by the former Governor Eric Cavu. I think those plan, that plan was made by experts from G M H because that was from G M H. So if you have, you guys have the time, before we talk about building a new hospital, take a look at the plan. Because that plan states that we will expand. We will have a parking garage. We have other areas that they wanted to do. The parking garage at that time, they projected to be about twelve million dollars. So that was since 2017, 2018. You know, time has gone by, right? So it probably is going to cost more, but I heard about the testimony about other people, the parking garage, you know, we need more parking, but there's a plan. You can ask the employee from, probably classified employees from G M H, if they were part of the formulating that plan. Because it did, I mean, it does exist. It's something that probably we all can go by. You all can go by and make the comparison with the Matrix Development Plan. Because that time, it only going to cost one hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Yes, we're going to put makeup on that pig, but you know, Dr. Shea is right. We created that pig. So we have to be realistic about the whole thing. Are we going to spend, according to the law that was passed in thirty-six Guam Legislature, under Title Twelve, Guam Code Annotated Title Twelve, Chapter Eighty-three, that the Guam Legislature will allow a lease payment of maximum to thirty-five million dollars a year for forty years? This plan that they have in the Business Sustainability Plan, they're only asking for one hundred and twenty-five million dollars to maintain, fix and maintain a Guam Memorial Hospital. Guam Memorial Hospital has been existent for the longest time. Okay, I was in the Philippines, running away from police officers because I experienced the martial law. So Guam Memorial Hospital withstood the big quake. Guam Memorial Hospital withstood all the typhoons. As a matter of fact, Guam Memorial Hospital won several awards during COVID-19 response. If I'm not mistaken, you know, when I retired, all I do is go to Facebook. And that's one of the things that caught my eyes. Even though G M H is, they call it dilapidated, but we have one thousand one hundred forty-six hard-working employees in that Guam Memorial Hospital, and they support our people, make sure that they save lives. So I don't want our people that works for G M H to be entangled with all this because, you know, we do have a plan. And as far as that comparison with the sustainability plan that was created by experts from G M H, I'm not sure how much that costs. I'm not sure how much the Matrix Plan costs. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not an expert. I'm only, I retired from Governor of Guam for thirty-one years, and I don't claim to be an expert in anything. I'm only expert in my life, expert with my family, and I'm an expert with God because you know, if you share it, it says right there. With God, all things are possible. Working together, all things will be possible for people of Guam. So all I'm asking is fix, maintain G M H at first because that's a realistic approach for the time being. A good example is I graduated from Simon Sanchez. I'm still waiting for Simon Sanchez to be built. That's what, thirteen years ago? How long would it take for this plan, this dream, to be realized? Remember, and that plan, and then the law, that it has to be, you have to get like a request for proposal, right? Who are you going to ask, you're going to put something out in the news or announcement? Who can afford to build a hospital? And they're going to come up with a proposal and say, "Okay, we'll do it." It tells me that, I mean, I'm asking myself now, are we capable of borrowing money for our own government? Do we have reached the debt ceiling for the government? I'm not sure because we've been asking, just like me asking my party, "Hey, party, can you give me a loan for me? I'll pay you on a monthly basis." That's what I've been doing. So forty years that we're going to have to put this, as everybody's saying, in our children's, children's future, right? We have to think responsibly. After all of that, if G M H needs to relocate, then follow the plan on how to finance and build the Guam Twenty-First Century Center of Excellence. That's the title of the act, title of the law. I'm not sure if you have to change that to Medical Complex. Or are we creating another law strictly just for the Guam Medical Complex? Because this is the, this is the plan. As far as refinancing, refinancing and all that stuff. That's where I got the thirty-five million dollars from. This is under the, it's qualified in the law under Guam Code Annotated Title Twelve, Chapter Eighty-three. And please, if you decide to relocate Guam Memorial Hospital, move them away from any military targets. I'm military. We don't want to be, we call this mistaken, be hit mistakenly because they thought that we're part of the military base. Or even at that, if you're going to put a helipad on top of the, on the top of the Guam Memorial Hospital or somewhere around there, and you have military planes landing, guess what? We become a military target. Can we afford to put our people in that kind of situation? I don't think so. I mean, you know, military-minded wise, the farther away that we are, the safer we are from any type of danger areas. I support Bill One Hundred and Five due to the matter of fact that it has the only option of building it in Tamuning area. But you know, if you follow the Business Sustainability Plan, expand G M H. That's why it says, you know, English is my second language, but my understanding to that is that. I mean, you know, it says expand, parking garage and all that. Those guys have a dream. Cavu Administration had a dream. So everybody likes to dream, right? So we'll see what we can do to accomplish those dreams. But be realistic, this whole approach. With all the lease, plan to lease Oka Point or Satpont Point and the bad publicity of being on the fault line, salt spraying, thirty billion ants, how are we going to lease the property if we're not going to build there? We're not going to build G M H? Remember, you know, that's my soap opera right now. I watch you guys sharing every day. Not every day, but something of my interest. They're saying that they're trying to work a plan to lease the Oka Point. How on earth are you going to convince people to buy that property or lease the property if this thirty billion ants is in the fault line? And the salt spray? You know, G M H, if you go to the backside, right? There's an embankment, right? It's like a hill. A thing that protects that from the salt line, I mean, salt spray. Am I correct? It's just a matter of even though what salt spray that you're going to have to bring up. Oka Towers is there. They maintain it. They're not complaining about the salt spray. It's still, it's still up and running. I'm just saying. Okay, with all the respect to our ancestral landowners, I know it's disservice to them for not actually getting compensated for the land that was taken from them. But if I'm not mistaken, the Ancestral Land Commission was established to have some kind of a business of leasing property, like the Crown Lines, right? Where we guys are planning to do, they're trying to build a hospital, and lease it and come up with some type of a plan, identify the ancestral landowners and compensate them somehow. They said they have sixty million dollars in the bank, in the land bank. So what's that sixty million dollars doing? Why are they doing, why are they compensating the landowners now? Why wait until you use that as a leverage to build a hospital? You know, I'm not speaking on behalf, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm just speaking of the veterans because they're using us as a bargaining power, bargaining tool, to convince the people, to convince you guys to build a clinic for us. VA has proposed three hundred and twenty-four billion dollars budget for this year. That's only a small portion of our budget. They can afford it, let them do their job. And I thank them, and I thank all the employees up there. Dream. Right before that, I know Senator Fisher mentioned about special interests. You know, I have a special interest in this. Our people are gone. I don't want to burden our people gone for forty years alone, thirty-five million dollars a year, if we can save by building on a place that's free, that was donated by the family, I believe it was Paris Family, strictly for hospital use. Why are we deviating from that? They, I guess they plan about building a convention center. But the plan was, I don't know what happened. I guess that's where the ants build up, the salt spray starts to build up and all that, right? And the fault line. So whose fault is that if we don't maintain a hospital? Whose fault is that if we fail to provide the medical services for our people? Whose fault is that if we don't build a hospital? Dream, right? I want to take advantage of this time. I'm almost done with my short spiel. Since we like to dream, right? Since we are in the hype of building, I am also here to lobby for the Guam Premier's Law Enforcement Agency, the Guam Police Department, to build their own headquarters in accordance with Guam Code Annotated Title Five, Chapter Fifty-nine, and other agencies identified in the law. There was a plan before. I have a copy of that plan. It was a good plan. As a matter of fact, I submitted a draft floor plan for the Criminal Investigation Division. And I don't know what happened. I guess it just fell off. The dream was just shattered. But I'm bringing the dream back up again because we have a law that was passed to help build the headquarters for Guam Police Department. Guam Police Department also has an enabling act somewhere down that line that states that the governor can identify a land, a piece of land for vehicles or buildings for the Guam Police Department. So we can use that as a leverage. And if our leaders really care for our veterans, why don't we build them accessible building? I saw Asan, the state building. I'm scared to go up there with my gout. There's no elevators. I saw one of the senators going up the stairs. I mean, I feel for you. I will not go up in the elevator with my gout. So folks, leaders, if you all, no, set aside election, electioneering. If you guys really care about the veterans, build them a state office first, right? Raise their budget to help our veterans. And as far as us lobbying for a bigger clinic, it's already happening, but one of the requirements is to have are, I spoke to some people from off-island. One of the requirements that they base in the size of the clinic is the number of veterans that is registered in this island. We have some veterans that don't register. We have some veterans that say, "Oh, there's nothing wrong with them." And they don't file for VA claim for disability. I have somebody, I know somebody that is really ill, is now applying for VA claim. So I asked all my fellow veterans to take advantage, not take advantage, but check out the system because the system is there for us to help us. Governor of Guam is in no business of taking care of disability for veterans, for building a clinic for the veterans because Uncle Sam, as we all depend on Uncle Sam, because thanks to Uncle Sam, we managed to survive this COVID-19 and then typhoid war. So I'm going to end this way. I ask all you guys, all before anything. Yes, this government has, and you have the legislature that introduced the bill, right? The governor will sign it or pocket veto it. Pocket veto, the way I said, the pocket veto is the same thing. Pocket veto, the way I said, the pocket veto is the same thing, "Oh, I agree in that bill." Pocket veto, elapsed after ten days, it becomes law. So if you pocket veto it, that means you agree to that bill, right? If, all I'm asking is, whenever all you folks get into the top office, when the bill is, oh, see, GPA. When the bill is introduced, make the decision. Make the decision, because you know, you guys are also part of the governing power, governing body of this island. You guys are the one that maintains the checks and balances for our government. And I thank all of you, because this is the most hard-working legislative body that I have witnessed since, I've been in this island since nineteen eighty-two, when I migrated from Philippines. So, do I have to continue?
Audio, are we still recording? Audio, are you recording, yes or no? Are they recording? I know, we're going to break.
Okay, no, I don't need the recording, I'm just asking, as fellow islanders, fellow, I know there's only one human race, right? It's only one race, which is the human race. My fellow Earthlings, all I'm asking is vote with fiscal responsibility. Be fiscally responsible and not to obligate our people to a forty-year lease for a maximum payment of thirty-five million dollars annually. Don't think about me, because I might die tomorrow. Think about our future, which is our children, and how they're going to be able to pay all these debts that we're putting on their backs, just because we wanted to do something now. You know, just like impossible shopping, impossible buying. We just buy it because it's there. But think, think about it first, think before we make that decision, think before we commit our people and that. Because one of the schools right now, we're still paying until twenty, twenty forty. That's a lease-back option. So, a big responsibility that we have, you look at, I've been looking at the budget, there's a lot of payments that we're making for schools. And those are the, those are the money that we owe to the party that we asked to get a loan for us. That's the way I see the lease-back option. But I guess that concludes my my testimony, and I want to make sure that my lights are on at the house, because I have five seats, public right.
Thank you, Mr. Amakwen. Si dos mas si. All right, we're going to have to take a break before any questions for this panel or any other testimonies. So we're going to take a five-minute break, or until audio is ready, thank you.